Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I would like to call this first meeting of 2022 of the Bloomington City Council to order. Welcome to everybody who is in attendance. Welcome to everyone who is watching. Welcome to our council members who are joining me here in the chambers this evening. Glad to see you all. Happy New Year. We are going to, we're going to start our meeting as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would, please stand and join me with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, good evening and welcome. Glad everybody is here with us tonight. We're a bit reconfigured in a variety of different ways because of a variety of different things, but we, we do, I think we will have all seven members here. And Mr. Mike Sable, our Assistant City Manager, is going to be the Acting City Manager at our meeting this evening. So, and our Council Secretary, Matt Brillert, is actually not at the Council dais with me tonight. He's, he is remote as well. So, Mr. Brillert, if you could, call the role of the City Council.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Brillert is not in the panel yet, so I'm going to, I'll do the honors myself.
Mr. Sable, if you could, please call the role.
Councilmember Carter?
Present.
Councilmember Coulter?
Present.
Councilmember Martin?
Present.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember De La Sandro?
Present.
Councilmember Lohman?
Here.
Mayor Bussie?
Here. Records show we have all seven members at the, in attendance this evening. Councilmember De La Sandro will be official in just one moment here. So, we have seven members here, and what I would like to move to next, our approval of agenda, if I could, Council, I would like to make a couple of changes. First of all, I would like to move our introductory item 5.1 up in the agenda. So, we would take that up immediately after we approve the agenda. So, we get our new City Council members sworn in and taking the oath of office and make everything official, if we could do that. And then I would like to add item 5.3, where, which would be an update on the Mall of America incident over the weekend, and Chief Hartley would come and address us on regarding that. Beyond that, we've got a fairly lengthy consent business. We do not have any hearings or public, public hearings or resolutions or ordinances this evening. And our organizational business will be a discussion on the planning commission work, on the Earn Sick and Safely Leave Task Force Report, and then all of the council appointments that we will be making this evening, for which council member will be representing the city on different boards and commissions across the city and across the Twin Cities. So, that is our agenda for this evening. I would like, as I said, I would like to move item 5.1 immediately after we approve the agenda and add item 5.3, an update on the Mall of America incident. I will move that agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Carter to adopt the agenda as amended. Hearing no further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillert, I see you're with us now. Good evening.
Yes, I'm in the Dakota Room, and will take the role on the agenda as amended. Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
De La Sandro?
I'll abstain until I'm official, okay?
Thank you.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
And Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries six zero. We have an agenda for this evening. And with that amended agenda, we will move to item 5.1, which is the City Council Oath of Office. This is a fun, one of the fun parts of the job and one of the farting parts of the first meeting of the year, to swear in our re-elected and our newly-elected council members. And so, we're excited to do that tonight. We're going to do it in this way, in this order. I'd like to start with Councilmember Coulter, move on to Councilmember De La Sandro, and then move to Councilmember Martin, who is remote. So, we just want to make sure that we can do the two in person and then the one in remote, and then we'll have an opportunity, if any, either, any or all of you would like to say anything after we get everybody sworn in or back at the dais, we can do that as well. So, our city clerk, Christina Scipioni, is here to administer the oath. So, Councilmember Coulter, please.
Yes, come on. We'll have you stand right over here, please, Councilmember.
Point me where you need me.
Sounds good. Right here.
It's easier for all.
Please repeat after me. I, Nathan Coulter, do solemnly swear.
I, Nathan Coulter, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of councilmember of the city of Bloomington.
Of the office of councilmember of the city of Bloomington.
In the county of Hennepin and state of Minnesota.
In the county of Hennepin and state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. This one's for me, I'm guessing?
Yes, we'll do the fancy hair. For your picture. There's your certificate of election. Thank you. Congratulations.
Tonight, we're very pleased to welcome our newest council member here in the city of Bloomington, Lona De La Sandro. Very excited to have you onboard, council member.
Thanks for having me, Mayor. You gonna come up here, Sarah? All right, please repeat after me. I, Lona De La Sandro, do solemnly swear.
I, Lona De La Sandro, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of councilmember of the city of Bloomington.
The, of the council, of the office of councilmember of the city of Bloomington.
In the county of Hennepin and state of Minnesota.
In the county of Hennepin and the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and abilities.
Congratulations.
This is the official official.
Your official official.
All right, there you go.
Thank you, and this is your certificate of election.
That's exciting.
You gonna take pictures?
Yep.
Awesome.
Ready? Two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our final oath of office is Councilmember Patrick Martin. I think you are a first, Patrick. I got to imagine this is the first time that this has been done virtually. So, well done, you're making history, as you do, as you do always. Well done.
I appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you.
Please repeat after me. I, Patrick Martin, do solemnly swear.
I, Patrick Martin, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of councilmember.
Of the office of councilmember.
Of the city of Bloomington.
Of the city of Bloomington.
In the county of Hennepin and state of Minnesota.
In the county of Hennepin and the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
And just to be official, Councilmember Martin did sign his oath of office a little bit earlier today. So, we have, we have our three council members sworn in and onboard, so welcome. Glad to have everybody. As I said, if you'd like to say something just briefly, I'd love to hear what you have to say upon this, this exciting day. Councilmember Coulter, why don't you kick us off?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I don't have a whole lot to say, really. I just want to say thank you, first of all, to my family. My parents are here, and, and they're the reason I can call myself a lifelong resident of Bloomington. And my, my wife, charity, and daughters, Eleanor and Adeline, are, are at home. It was, the decision was made that that was best for all. But I also want to start just by thanking Bloomington voters, really, for giving me the opportunity to continue to serve our city. Really is the only place I've ever called home. These last few years have really been far more challenging than I think any of us expected, and I don't think that that's going to change anytime soon, unfortunately. I am just immensely grateful and proud of the confidence and trust that folks here in Bloomington have placed in me. And I want to recommit myself to not, never taking that for granted. Over these last few years, we have taken on some big and difficult discussions, and while they have occasionally been contentious, I continue to believe that we are moving the city of Bloomington in a direction that is not only supported by the broader community, but more importantly is right from a policy perspective as well as a moral one. And I am so, so excited to continue doing this work. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just briefly, I feel incredibly blessed to have been entrusted with a couple more years working on behalf of folks across the city. And as well, a huge thank you to everybody that sacrificed so much to help me throughout the campaign, that have helped me through my whole life to be able to, to sit in my bedroom and digitally take an oath of office like this. It's a huge honor and a privilege. And I will say, I, I am incredibly excited to continue working with this amazing group of colleagues that I have. I'm still excited to work with my newest colleague, Councilmember De La Sandro, and the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of staff that work tirelessly behind the scenes to help bring our policy vision and direction to life. So, it's, it's a pretty big deal, and thank everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. And Councilmember De La Sandro, welcome aboard. Very excited to have you onboard. I know how exciting it is to be sitting in those chairs for the first time. It's, it's just a great event and somewhat overwhelming sometimes, I think.
Yeah.
But we're very excited to have you onboard and looking forward to serving with you, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that very much. Yeah, I'm very, it is overwhelming and a little bit, besides the fact that you can see like three of yourself up here and everything. Thank you, everyone who is here. I have quite the peanut gallery supporting me. I couldn't do this without all of the wonderful people who I have in my life, specifically Sarah, and Sarah's mom is with me tonight, which is pretty amazing. She flew in from Houston for the event tonight, which is really special. Serves on council in, in her area of, of Houston, Texas as well. And so, when I said in my campaign that I come from a long line of, of servers, people who step up and serve their community, I married into it as well, so I'm very grateful. Yeah, this is, this is historic in a number of ways, you all know that, but also for me, just a very humbling, humbling experience. When people elect you to office, they elect you because they have put faith and trust that you will do what's best for them, and, you know, that's no small thing. So, I'm grateful for the opportunity. I will do my very best, and I look forward to hearing from all the residents of District Three as we move forward. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Again, welcome aboard. With that, we will move on with our agenda, and we will move to item four on our agenda, which is our public comment period. It is a twenty-minute period at each council meeting where we set aside for people to come forward and address the council on items not on tonight's agenda. And as you probably have heard, as I've said this a number of times over the last couple of years, we limit it to five minutes per person, not to cut anyone off, but to make sure that everybody has the same opportunity to speak. We also try and make sure that there is no back and forth. The council will ask questions or maybe look for clarification at some point, but it's an opportunity for people to come forward to the council, and it's not necessarily a give and take between the council and the residents who do come forward. I know that we had one person come forward, Ms. Sally Ness, requested to speak to the council again this evening. If you could please come forward. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. From the July 23rd, 2020 decision to dismiss the case, decision states Ness's decision to chill her speech was not objectively reasonable for two principal reasons. First, her intended conduct is not prescribed by the statute. Additionally, the definition of harass and the, and the word another suggests that harassment must target an individual victim, as such does not extend to the monitoring of a physical space, an issue, or a random crowd of people. Ness claims she intends to monitor an issue, the non-compliant use of DAF's facilities and the use of Smith Park by filming and photographing the activity in the physical vicinity of DAF, which may include filming and photographing people. Ness does not claim a desire to surveil individuals or track their location by filming or photographing them once they leave DAF's neighborhood. Thus, as the county attorney and the city both acknowledge, Ness's intended conduct is not prescribed by the harassment statute because she is not tracking or monitoring a particular individual. And yet, Detective One, I just want to let you know, before we leave, as you're requesting us to, you are being considered for being charged with a crime based on what you've already told us and what this family told us. What I told them was that I take pictures all the time of the traffic and overuse and non-compliant use. Decision states, the harassment statute does not prohibit Ness from filming and photographing the use of DAF-related activities in the physical vicinity of DAF, including people using the neighborhood park. What Ness says she wants to do, filming and photographing related to potential code violations and excessive use of private and public facilities, is not prescribed by the harassment statute. Yet, I had detectives at my home twice, an incident report was written, and a request for prosecution was submitted to the county. Decision states, Ness also contends she was threatened with prosecution because Detective interviewed her in October 2019 and told Ness she was being investigated for allegedly violating the harassment statute. However, Detective described the interview as a preliminary investigation informed Ness that she was investigating complaints from citizens, not the city. And yet, there was a request for prosecution submitted to the county, and it was for intended conduct not prescribed by the statute. From the plaintiff's response filed March 16th, 2020, the city had submitted the request for prosecution to county on or about November 7th, 2019, and plaintiffs' declarations were served on November 15th, 2019. As of December 16th, 2019, the city was unaware of the county's decision not to pursue the prosecution. And in its filing in opposition to plaintiff's request for a preliminary injunction, the city stated that even if Hennepin County declines to charge, the Bloomington City Attorney's Office will have the opportunity to review the information obtained through the Bloomington Police Department's investigation for possible non-felony charges. The city contacting the county and stating that the city's attorney's office will review the information for possible non-felony charges is a credible threat. Additionally, as noted in the police report, Ness was advised that she could be charged with harassment if the parents in principle felt intimidated by her actions is a credible threat. Decision states, Sergeant told Ness he was responding to harassment complaint about Ness videotaping and photographing students arriving at school for the day. The Sergeant responded to illegal activity, tells me I have a right to film, but my presence was intimidating and to be more sensitive to record and move on. Decision states, Sergeant asked Ness to study the harassment statute, suggesting that her repeated and extended presence was bordering on harassment issue, and said he thought she was going overboard on oversight of all this, and it is turning into harassment-type issue. And to read the harassment statute, make sure you're not violating it so you don't get a charge on you. Having detectives at my home house twice, an incident report written, a request for prosecution submitted to the county, and being told my presence is intimidating and turning into harassment-type issue chilled my speech and should not have happened, especially noting that the county attorney and the city both acknowledge Ness intended conduct is not prescribed by the harassment statute because she is not tracking or monitoring a particular individual. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ness. Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to address the council tonight on items not on tonight's agenda? Anyone else? Mr. Sable, do we have anyone on the line who wishes to speak?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, there are no public commenters on the line right now.
Very good. We've got no one on the line, no one coming forward in the council chambers. I would then close tonight's public comment period with the realization that I skipped over item 4.1 in response to the prior meeting's comments. Mr. Sable, was there anything we were going to respond to from 4.1?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, no prior comment.
I didn't think so. That's probably why it slipped my mind. Thank you very much for that. Move on to item five, the remainder of our introductory items. And our first introductory item is item 5.2, which is our new employee introductions, our fire department battalion chiefs. We've been working our way through new employee introductions, basically catching up on a number that we were behind, I think that we got caught up or caught behind during the pandemic, so it's nice to get caught up on some of these. And our fire chief, Yuli Seal, is with us this evening, giving us the, an introduction to our new fire department battalion chiefs. Good evening, Chief Seal.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I appreciate this opportunity. I just want to say, I'm going to let each one of them introduce themselves, and they'll come to this, this chair and this camera here in, in, one after the other, but I just want to say that I really appreciate the support for this effort. These three individuals have already had a considerable impact on fire department operations, positive impact on fire department operations, and clearly, this is something that has been good for the department. With that, I'm going to let each one step forward and introduce themselves. Suffice to say that all three of them are longtime fire department members, all of them have been officers, and they bring quite a breadth and depth of experience with them to their roles.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening.
Hey, good evening, council and Mayor. My name is Chris Kaiser. Been with the fire department for about, coming up on 20 years here in 2022, and some of you may have seen me around City Hall from time to time, as I've been a fire inspector or was a fire inspector previously for the city for about over 15 years. And so, I've kind of taken this new job, new roles and responsibilities, pretty excited for the, for some new opportunities here. Yeah, I got, it's like, you know, typical kind of guy, get married, have a wife, two boys, keep me pretty busy, and, you know, hockey and baseball, got a couple of dogs, just got a new baby bulldog, so that's pretty challenging and fun, but that's kind of me in a real brief, real brief statement and happy to answer any questions. But again, I'm happy to be here. Thank you for your time, looking forward to some new challenges and hoping guide the fire department into its future.
Thank you, Chief Teisner, and thank you for your continued service to Bloomington and the Bloomington Fire Department.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Matt Hammernick. I'm one of the new battalion chiefs. I've been with the fire department since 2008. Excited for this opportunity. My wife and I have lived in Bloomington since 2007. We have three children that we are raising here, so when I'm not doing fire department stuff, I'm usually found at one of the softball or baseball fields or football fields coaching or cheering on my kids. And just really excited for the opportunity to work for the city of Bloomington in a full-time capacity and helps do this department into the future. So, thank you for your time and thank you for having me.
Absolutely. Thank you, and look forward to meeting you in person. Thanks much. Good evening.
Councilmembers, Mayor. My name is Ryan Peterson. I'm a longtime resident of Bloomington, my whole life. My parents grew up here, and I'm just really glad, grateful for the opportunity to have this position here. This is a great honor to be able to serve the community in this, in this opportunity. So, I've been with the fire department about eighteen years, nineteen years now, and yeah, look forward to many more with Bloomington Fire Department certainly. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Okay, that's a virtual, virtual introduction to three, three existing fire department employees, but recently promoted and into their new roles, and like I said, already having a considerable impact on fire department operations. So, thank you.
Very good, and thank you. Thank you, Chief Seal and, and Chief Teisner, Chief Hammernick, Chief Peterson, thank you much. Looking forward to your service and looking forward to seeing what you can continue to bring to the Bloomington Fire Department and the safety of Bloomington residents. So, thank you all so very much. Moving on, item 5.3 on our agenda is the agenda item that we did add. It's an update on the Mall of America shooting incident that occurred over the weekend. I asked Chief Hartley to come forward and give an update both to the City Council and to the community at large on an incident that I know had a lot of people shook and concerned, and, but I think it's, the investigation, it sounds like, is headed in the right direction. So, good evening, Chief Hartley, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to address and give you the update on the shooting incident that occurred Friday night at the Mall of America. Officers and mall security personnel were already in the area when the one shot rang out and were on scene within about 30 seconds of that happening. So, we had extra staffing over at the mall due to the holiday, and I can't say enough about the actions of mall security getting on scene and rendering aid to the victim. That individual suffered a non-life-threatening wound to a leg, and as a subsequent, the round then ricocheted and hit another person who was treated on scene but not transported to the hospital. I just want to comment on a couple of things because I think they're really important, but the Mall of America and the police department train extensively for incidents like this. It was pretty evident that night when I got there that there was already a secure scene. A lockdown had been put in place where I think a majority of the shoppers and guests at the mall participated in for their own safety. And so, after about 45 minutes, that lockdown was released and people were free. The mall was closing anyway at 6:00 PM. But again, we train hand in hand with the Mall of America, and when we have an incident like this, which is isolated, it, it's, the benefits were, were very clear and evident that night. Getting back to the investigation, we were able to determine very quickly that the individual had left in a vehicle after the shooting, the suspect, with other people. And so, there was no reason to search the entire mall, that if we couldn't make that determination, that would have been very time-consuming. The investigation, we worked on this all weekend. We are moving in a really positive direction. We were able to arrest two individuals last night from a motel in Roseville. We were assisted by the Roseville Police Department along with Ramsey County, and our Bloomington SWAT team went up and actually helped bring two into custody. So, that 19-year-old adult male from, or adult male from St. Paul is being charged with aiding and abetting first-degree assault. And again, we are moving in a real positive direction on making an additional arrest of the suspect. I want to thank publicly the response we got that night from our neighboring agencies. They all came when they heard the call go out, and again, it was of great assistance to have those resources. And then subsequently, at the state level, they offered up help as well. And I was out at the mall the next day, and it looks like, you know, they're shaken, but people have moved on and they were still doing a vibrant business. So, again, another point is just that this wasn't a random act. The suspect and victim had a prior contact, and so, you know, I think that's always a big question for people, is if I'm out there shopping and it's just all of a sudden someone starts firing rounds, or in this case, a round. So, again, I had us off to, and when I can, I do our own response internally and the investigators and members of the SWAT team that have been busy throughout the weekend, bringing this to, I think, a really good place, and I will be able to update, I believe, shortly. Any questions?
Council, any questions of Chief Hartley this evening? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I don't actually have a question, it's a comment. Chief Hartley, just thank you again for your team and for the team at Uh, Chief Hartley, just thank you again for your team and for the team at the mall there. Um, as I believe you know, my, my daughter works at the mall in retail, my older daughter's boyfriend works there, and that's not uncommon within our community. We have a lot of family members that work there and support that place, and to hear the response time that you mentioned in a situation like that and how much coordination and training goes into that, um, just, uh, thank you again for, for everything you guys do. Uh, it's, uh, uh, it's very positive to hear as a father who has kids that are there, and, um, my daughter was getting text messages from coworkers during the incident and not knowing what's going on, and so, um, little bit of a scary situation, but sounds like a positive resolution and, and good luck on the investigation afterwards. So, um, my only hope and question is I hope we prosecute and, uh, you know, get these people, uh, so that they're not threatening our community anymore.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson.
Counsel, anything additional? I will just add my, my thanks. Uh, obviously, you, your, your officers and, uh, the mall staff, the mall security team work incredibly well together. This is, I, I was so impressed when I was there to see the coordination and the, uh, the, the, the work, the, the obvious, uh, collaboration that had gone into preparing for something like this. It's obviously never something you want to think about, but you certainly train for the worst and, and hope for the best, and, uh, obviously, that training paid off because, uh, throughout the mall, uh, what I understood, the, the shops, the stores, the, uh, employees at the mall did exactly as they were instructed to do, and I know that they drill monthly at the Mall of America for something like this. And to see the, as I said, the coordination between Bloomington Police and mall security was just very impressive. So, thank you so very much for that, and, and thanks for the work that went into that, and, and for working over the long holiday weekend, obviously, as well, to try and bring this person to justice, and good to hear that things are moving in the right direction, and fully expect that, that arrest will be made as soon as possible. So, looking forward to hearing that news from you as well, so, but thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, anything further?
All right.
We will move on to item six, our consent agenda this evening. We have 10 items on the consent business. I believe Councilmember Coulter has our consent agenda. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. I have not heard from anyone with any holds. Um, the city manager or assistant city manager did not contact me with anything. I will put out a last call. I'm not seeing anyone jump with their literal or virtual hands, so I will go ahead and move items, excuse me, items 6.1 through 6.10.
We have a motion by Councilmember Coulter, a second by Councilmember Carter to adopt tonight's consent agenda, as stated. Hearing no further, council discussion on this. Mr. Brillert.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
DeLisandro.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussi.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. As I mentioned earlier, item seven, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinance, we have no public hearings at this evening's meeting, so we will move on to item eight, which is our organizational business. And item 8.1 is, uh, the 2022 Planning Commission Work Plan. Uh, we have this discussion each year to, to talk through with the planning staff, the different things that they have on their, on their plate, and, and to have an additional discussion if there's anything we want to add or subtract, or how exactly we would like to see what the planning commission, see the planning commission take on. And with us this evening, I know we have, uh, Julie Farnham, our senior planner. I see Glenn Markergard as well, and I will send it over to you folks. Uh, is it Glenn or Julie? Who's going to take this one?
It's me.
Julie, good evening, welcome.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and council members, and good evening, everyone, and for the benefit of the new council member and for some of you who haven't seen me for a while, um, I am Julie Farnham. I'm one of the senior planners in the planning division, which is part of Community Development Department, and I'll be giving the main presentation, but I am joined, uh, as mentioned, uh, by the planning manager, Glenn Markergard, as well as by the planning commission chair, John Solberg, and also our city engineer, uh, Julie Long, is, uh, going to be here to, uh, brief you, uh, on some of our, uh, projects that we collaborate with, um, on transportation. So, with that, I will share my screen and get into it.
Commissioner Solberg, I didn't see it pop up on the screen. Welcome. Good to see you.
Good to see you as well, Mayor.
Thanks for being here tonight.
And can everyone see my screen?
We can indeed. I think you're good to go.
All right, great. So, um, planning commission, as city council in, uh, 2021, uh, did a lot of, uh, remote or hybrid, uh, kind of work, uh, meetings, and, uh, that worked out actually pretty, pretty well, not ideal, but, but pretty well. And then there were some other things that they, uh, business that they took care of back in, uh, 2021 as well. With regard to the budget, um, in 2021, uh, the planning division shifted 20% of the hours of one of our long-range planners to the HRA as a kind of a, a budget balancing measure. We're continuing to do that as well this year. Um, and the good news is we do a lot of, um, joint projects, uh, that are housing-related, so it, it really works out quite well. In addition, as you may recall, the, uh, recently adopted budget did include a planner position to get added, and we're, um, getting going on that, uh, pretty quickly here in the new year. Um, that position will, um, work on both current planning and long-range planning, so we'll, we'll see, uh, where the, their skills are and, and, uh, also where the most need So, uh, it was a busy year in 2021. Um, did a lot of, uh, development, and I'm sure you, uh, recall seeing all that. Um, we also did a lot of, uh, various plans and code amendments, and I'm not going to go into all the details, but, uh, they're here and, uh, certainly can ask questions about them later if you so choose. So, moving into this year's work plan, there were a fair amount of projects that got carried over. Some of these projects are longer-term projects. They don't, were never intended to get completed in one year, and some of them get started late in the year and thus carry over. So, anyway, uh, there was a number of those projects, and most of these will be wrapping up in the first half of 2022. We've identified four new projects, uh, to consider. Uh, actually, two of them have already kind of started, um, but anyway, there's, they're new, uh, in that we haven't really started to work on them at all. And then we always do a fair nu- number of kind of ongoing projects and initiatives that are citywide or relating to council priorities. Um, they take up, um, hours, and so just for a planning exercise, we like to put some hours on them for our, um, in order to kind of guesstimate how much time we actually have for new projects. So, we do include those in our work plan. I would also mention that our work plan, um, the planning commission work plan really focuses on the long-range projects and not the current planning projects because those aren't discretionary. So, but we certainly, the planning commission and planning staff spend a lot of time on current planning projects, which are the ones that are the development reviews that come in by the private sector, and we are obligated to, um, process those in a, in a timely manner. And so, that's just something we have to do, and then the long-range, uh, projects that we have on this, uh, work plan are really more discretionary. So, with that, I'm just going to get into a little bit of detail on each one of these projects. So, um, these, uh, this project is already ongoing. It's, it's already started reviewing, uh, single and two-family standards, things like lot sizes, lot widths, um, FAR, those kinds of things. So, uh, this is actually going to a joint meeting of the HRA and the planning commission this Thursday, and, uh, we're anticipating it moving forward to you at a study session, uh, later this month, so January 24th. At the same time, at the same meeting, you'll also be seeing, uh, the, um, latest, uh, update on the ADU standards. So, uh, you may recall, we adopted ADU standards back in 2009. Uh, we haven't had a lot of, um, ADUs actually built, um, in part because some of our standards are a little tough to, um, uh, implement. It, it becomes kind of a barrier. So, uh, we wanted to take a look at those standards again and see if we couldn't remove some of those barriers. So, that's what this project is, is about. Another project that is well on its way is, uh, reviewing the multi-family parking standards, so things like just the overall number of parking spaces, as well as the requirement for, uh, some of those to be, um, enclosed. Um, so this is something that we often see folks requesting, uh, deviations or flexibility to, so we, we thought, well, let's take a, a look at, at our, our standards and try to, to right-size them perhaps. Um, so this too, um, is going to a joint planning commission, HRA, meeting this Thursday, and we anticipate it coming to, uh, you at a study session early February. Another project, uh, that kind of came up, uh, this wasn't originally on our, um, 2021, uh, work plan, but with all the changes in the, in the market, um, especially around hotels, we were getting a lot of interest in, uh, repurposing hotels for, for other, other uses. Likewise, we know that the market is changing for offices. So, um, we started working on this study, um, uh, this fall and, and are, um, well on the way to having a pretty good, uh, uh, analysis done, and we'll be presenting some, uh, ideas for how to move forward, uh, with that to, uh, both planning commission and the city council here in the first part of the year. Residential livability standards, so this is kind of an outgrowth of, of some of the issues that we've seen arise where we've got, um, particularly where we've got industrial uses, uh, in, in close proximity to residential uses. And really, the, the big culprits are, are noise, um, glare from, um, indoor lighting primarily, for instance, like with the, um, self-storage facilities, um, and odors, which are a little bit harder to control. But, but this, again, is something staff has been looking at and will be moving forward. Uh, actually, you already saw this at a study session in, in December, I believe. Um, and so we'll be coming forward to, uh, with some actual draft, um, language to, uh, for code amendments here in the early part of the year as well. The South Loop Alternative Urban Area-Wide Review Update, the A U A R, uh, this is a area-wide, um, environmental review. It's kind of a substitute environmental assessment worksheet. This has to be updated every five years in order to remain in effect, and this is, uh, essentially a substitute for doing individual EAWs for any project that would trigger an EAW under state statutes. Um, and because the South Loop has a lot of projects, um, that are likely large enough to trigger EAWs, um, back in 2002, the city decided to, um, go with this A U A R, which was a newer process at that point in time that allowed, um, for kind of, uh, an area where there was a lot of, a larger-scale development to, uh, do a, a more comprehensive, um, environmental review. So, um, the current A U A R expires in May of this year, and so, um, uh, work has already begun on pulling this together. I'll be bringing this to you in late February to release it for the, uh, rid, um, uh, official review, and it has to go through the Environmental Quality Board who publishes it, and then there's a whole agency review. It's a, um, you know, it's a standard environmental review kind of process, and, uh, that's the schedule to hopefully get in front of you for a final approval in May. This is a project that is really being led by Parks, a Natural Resources Management Plan. It was something that was recommended in the, uh, recently adopted Parks Master Plan, as well as the Minnesota Valley Plan, or it's kind of building off of the Minnesota River Valley Plan and, and extending some of the, um, natural resource inventory work that was done with that River Valley project, um, to a citywide look. Um, Parks is leading this, and so far, we, uh, planning has not been, uh, had a lot of involvement in it. It's kind of a two-step process where right now, they're really doing a lot of the kind of data and inventory work that is really more technical. Um, so we expect we will be, um, on the, we know that we're on the work team for this, the, uh, project team for this, um, but, uh, that'll start up, uh, more in, in the next few months. One of our more complicated projects is the sign ordinance update, and you've seen this. It's been on the, the list the last couple of years, but has been, um, kind of sidetracked for, uh, a number of different reasons. Um, i- in part, but there's a, there's a lot of legal issues involved with this, and we've had some changes in our legal staff, and so it's really important that we get, um, you know, kind of things settled down there. There's also some other, um, lawsuits that are in play right now, are going to the Supreme Court later this spring that could, um, we'll need to take into consideration. That said, there has been a, a fair amount of work done on this and certainly, uh, understanding of what we need to do to wrestle our existing, uh, sign ordinance and make it much more user-friendly, and, um, also to, uh, align it with some more recent court cases that have come through around signage. Um, so this is a very complicated kind of thing, but the, the hope is that we'll get this started up, uh, later this spring, um, and the focus will really be on, uh, doing some extensive outreach to, um, the sign industry as well as affected, uh, businesses, and, you know, there's, it could be a, a lot of different groups that might have an interest in our sign regulation. So, it, there will be a, a fairly, um, robust engagement effort around this project, but hopefully, by the end of the year, we will have a, a draft that, uh, will be ready to at least start to review. So, food truck standards. So, uh, this was something that, uh, you had seen a few years ago, and in fact, the planning commission recommended approval of an ordinance that was actually drafted and set up for public hearings, um, back in March 2020, and then, of course, the pandemic hit and, uh, the council opted to, uh, put this on hold, uh, especially because there was some pushback from, um, bricks and mortar restaurants and, and such. Um, so it's been on the, it's been in the parking lot essentially for the last two years, and so the question is, do we want to move this forward? And, and, and staff thought that maybe this would be a good time to move it forward, and that's why it is appearing on this, um, work plan. So, getting into some of the newer projects, um, a single-room occupancy standards. So, single-room occupancies are a type of housing that could, uh, really play a part in, um, creating an affordable option here in, in the city and elsewhere, and it's something that Hennepin County has certainly been, been, uh, taking a look at, as well as Ramsey County, St. Paul. Um, and so this is something that has come up as, uh, something that, that the city of Bloomington should maybe consider. It's, it's possible that some of the work that's being done with the hotel conversion study, some of that, um, what comes out of that might be, uh, a nice foundation for, or provide some focus for, for, um, leading into this project. This project would also be one of those collaborations with HRA because this is very much a housing, uh, focused, uh, project. The 98th Street 35W Corridor Study, um, some of you may recall, this was, uh, first recommended back when the 98th Street Station Area Plan was completed, uh, three or four years ago. Um, and then the Lyndale retrofit plan approved last year, um, also, um, spoke to this, and, and so this is a project being led by Public Works, and, uh, we are, um, on the verge of, uh, we, we got the proposals in, we're, they're under review right now, and the hope is that come February, we will have a consultant on board to begin this process. One of the objectives here, in addition to, um, just looking at the whole corridor and making it more, uh, multimodal, especially with the orange line coming on, uh, into play, but, um, the site of the Metro Transit Park and Ride, uh, ramps, I'm sorry, Park and Ride Lots, um, is, those properties were purchased with, uh, the Ralph Right-Away Access Funds, um, and they were based on a, a design for the interchange of 35W and 98 that was, um, approved or accepted back in the 1990s. And, um, the idea is that at, at the point that the interchange actually gets rebuilt, um, it'll need to, the new, that design that was approved would actually take up part of that land where- part of that land where the transit station is right now. So part of this study is to look at alternative interchange designs with the, in hope that perhaps a different design could be found that is functional and also would not require the use of the the land that is currently used as a transit station, which would then free it up for some transit-oriented redevelopment. This project, environmental impacts mapping. So there's been some initial discussions around this, so pretty much led by our sustainability staff. But this will start more in during the second quarter of of this year. And again, it'll be led by our sustainability staff. But the idea is that we'll have a group of staff from from Public Works Sustainability, from Public Health, who has a lot of data that they've mapped, and also planning, who also has mapped a lot of data. And and the idea would be to create a series of maps that would help us identify where there are environmental impacts, where they're the the most critical. And also, there's kind of an equity issue here as well. So this information, this tool basically, could be used as we get into looking at equity impacts of of projects as well. So that is the the goal of of doing this. Creating a transitional industrial zoning district. So the graphic here is from a study that was done five years or so ago, where we were looking at industrial lands in the city and came up with kind of two categories of industrial. One that we termed protected, which is shown in the pink, and the other, which was termed transitional. And by transitional, meaning some areas where we're seeing interest in non-traditional industrial, so more commercial, sometimes even residential, kinds of uses. And but these areas are all zoned for industrial. So the idea here is to maybe look at perhaps either doing an overlay zone or perhaps coming up with a new zoning district that would be transitional industrial that would allow for a broader mix of kind of a industrial, commercial, perhaps with some limited residential, and have standards that are appropriate to ensure the compatibility of these newer types of uses and protects the existing uses. Because one of the things was that we wanted to make sure that what was called protected industrial is not negatively impacted as redevelopment occurs. This is a project that we do every year, the annual miscellaneous issues ordinance. It's kind of a cleanup. And so this will be coming before you in the next month or two, I believe. So this is just one of those, it's kind of an ongoing project. It's a standalone, but we do it every year. So as I mentioned before, there's a lot of projects or initiatives that planning gets involved and that are really kind of ongoing and it, they, you know, they're not discrete projects, they're they're just things that we get involved with. But they do take time, which is why we want to call them out and we, why we want to actually assign some hours to it so that we we know that we we aren't over-committing. And with that, another project, I guess, that's kind of an ongoing project and that we help out with our our transportation and transit initiatives that are led by Public Works. And with that, if Julie Long is on, I will turn it over to Julie Long to just walk through, give you a brief description of these projects. So Julie, are you here?
I am. Thanks, Julie. As Julie mentioned, engineering from Public Works also works with our planning commission and planning staff on transportation and transit-related initiatives. And we've highlighted a few of our joint projects that will be coming up here in 2022. The first is the Strategic Transportation Plan, which we are going to begin scoping here in 2022. We've heard from council that neighborhood livability, traffic-related issues are very important. And we're hearing a lot from our community on those issues. So we want to look at peer community approaches and look at different policy guidance and priorities that we could set in the future related to that. Another thing with the orange line opening, we have a transit station at 98th and then one up in the Penn American District. And so we're looking at doing a 35W parallel route, bike route. And part of it will be in conjunction with the 98th corridor study, because we think that east-west connection will be important to get to the other side of the freeway. We're also working with Ramsey County and St. Paul on their Riverview Corridor Study update, which will connect St. Paul to the Mall of America in the South Loop District. And we're looking at teaming with Hennepin County at the corridor study of Old Cedar Avenue. And it includes the intersection of Old Cedar and Old Chappie Roads. And in addition to this, council is very aware of the 494 project that Mindat is leading. There's also a trunk highway 77 study. And there are other regional issues that might pop up throughout the year. But we'll be working with planning commission and planning staff to achieve those goals.
Thank you, Julie. So moving on to just the our calendar that we try to put together. So the the basic message here is a lot of the carryover projects, we anticipate being able to wrap those up in first and second quarter of of this year. And then, and that frees up then time to shift our focus to some of these newer other projects that I I mentioned. And then we always have a list of other projects that that, whether it's council or planning commission or just staff feels are things that we should be looking at. We we kind of keep this list going. So there was one that got added at the request of the planning commission, and that was the American Boulevard Transit Way Study. And and that is something that's coming out of really the Met Council's recent update or process of updating their regional transportation plan, where where they had suggested removing the American Boulevard Transit Way from that plan. And Bloomington, who was long planned for that as a transit way, and and that has been in regional transportation plans for many years, wanted to see it remain in there. And so Met Council asked if if we would do a study then of that transit way. And I would say that the American Boulevard Transit Way Study, the American Boulevard Corridor Plan, which is really kind of an outgrowth of, you know, all the changes that Mindat is working on with the access, particularly on the e, on the east half of of America and between 35W and Cedar. You know, Nicollet will be closed off and 12th will be closed off and Portland will be greatly expanded. So that's going to have some land use impacts throughout that corridor. And that corridor really is the kind of the last remaining area that hasn't undergone a district planning process or or anything like that. So so that's kind of what this American Boulevard Corridor Plan is. So, you know, perhaps the American Boulevard Transit Way Study would would lead things off just because of a timing and then, you know, but there's a lot of overlap with the American Boulevard Corridor Plan. And then the outcome of those two plans would really identify what properties in that corridor should be rezoned. And so that's kind of those three projects that are on our future to-do list are kind of interrelated. And then, of course, there's lots of other things that we have. And some of them we lead, some of them we assist other departments with. And we presented this to the planning commission on December 2nd. And they generally concurred with the draft as presented. With, as I just mentioned, the one recommendation was to add the American Boulevard Transit Way Study to that list of future projects, which we have in the version that's in front of you. And I guess with that, I would just pause and and see if Chair Solberg wants to expand on anything or relay any other comments that the planning commission had. Chair Solberg?
Thank you, Julie. Mayor and council members, yeah, first thing I would like to do is just to thank our planning staff, our Public Works staff and park staff for all the work that they've done in the last year and for the past several years of really providing a well-thought-out plan for the planning commission. I think one piece that stands out to me in this particular recommendation this year is really the response to equity, affordable housing, the the whole kind of system planning of bringing in transportation, land use, all together. And we recognize that there are staffing challenges for each of the the areas that are working on these. And so Planning Commission did highly support the recommendations that were brought forward today. And then you'll see, again, some of those future projects are recognitions that while important, they need to wait their turn in the priority list. So I think you did a great job, Julie and Julie. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. And with that, we just have some questions, maybe to frame up the discussion here. But we're really just looking for your input on the draft that's in front of you and if there are any projects that you think should be removed or added or re-prioritized from the list. So I guess with that, I will turn it over to you all and let me know if there's a different slide that you would like me to have in front of you, if that would be helpful. I think I'll actually go back to, well, I'll keep it here for now. I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
And thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Julie, Julie and Chair Solberg. Thank you very much for the information. Council, those are the 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 three inputs that they're looking for. But I guess I'd ask first if there are any questions about what was presented, anything that you need clarification on or more information on. Councilmember Lowman?
Thank you, Mayor. I did have a couple of questions in terms of of clarification. When we look at that food truck piece, has there been any study done with our economic development area to kind of see if the needle has moved at all from when we originally kind of put that on a, on ice, as it were? So I'm just curious, you know, what we did, what was, you know, I don't know if we used any metrics at the time. Obviously, we could see that we had a had a pandemic going. But I'm just kind of wondering in terms of if there's been any additional study around that from an economic standpoint. And then the secondary question that I have, maybe I'll stop there and let you go ahead and answer that one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Lowman. Not, there really hasn't been anything done since the project was put on hold. It was at a point where ordinance had been drafted. So it was pretty well kind of kind of finalized. And there had been a fair amount of outreach done to restaurant owners and the food truck industry as well at that point. So if this project were to get restarted, we probably want to touch base on some of those things and perhaps do a little calling around to our peer communities just to find out if if, you know, anything has changed. A lot of that research had been done in terms of what works and what doesn't work in terms of standards for for food trucks. But, you know, that was two years ago, so so things may have changed, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not, I I think I'm not being clear here. More so what I'm interested in, maybe this is more for the council. We we kind of put this on hold and, you know, maybe things have changed now where we could move forward with this. And I, what I'm curious about is if we did an economic study at the time that 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 drove that decision. Mayor, do you do you remember how we got to that conclusion? I'm just trying to figure out how we got to that and if there's some way that we would would kind of know that we need to kind of move forward with this.
If I recall, Councilmember Lowman, I think as as the pandemic started and the lockdown started and there was the understanding and the realization that it was obviously going to affect the bricks and mortar establishments in Bloomington and everywhere. I think the council made the decision then that we didn't want to move forward with the food truck ordinance in order to protect our bricks and mortar establishments. Again, I think it was just anecdotal. I don't know that we had any specific data. I don't know that we were working off specific metrics. I think it was just kind of something we realized was happening. We wanted to make sure that we wanted to not impede our bricks and mortar bars and restaurants and any more than what the the restrictions associated with COVID were going to be impeding them. With that being said, I don't know if there are any measurements that we could officially take to see. I suppose we could see if there was, what kind of numbers, if if, you know, a quick request from them, their numbers compared to pre-pandemic to now, what they are for foot traffic in terms of sales, that kind of thing. I guess I I could say the two or three different times I got out over the holidays, there there were a decent number of people in the different establishments that I was in and seemed to be doing okay. That's not to say everybody is out of the woods yet, or that's not to say that's a typical thing. It's not just a holiday-related thing. But it it might be worth the request or at least the outreach, I think, and the engagement and the in the discussions, I think, with the existing, with the existing restaurants in town, just to see where they stand right now after two years of pandemics and 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 the lockdowns that are obviously over now, but still the, the, I think, the hesitation that some people might have to go out and and enjoy a meal at a restaurant. So I think beyond that, I don't think we have anything, we had anything official or specific that we based that decision on.
Thanks for that, for that that piece there. And I I sure, I'd like to make sure we are we are protecting it. But I also want to not, you know, stall it out, because then we we lose out on the opportunity. So I I'd like us to 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 just have a chance to have a look and see, maybe there's some city that kept the the food trucks going and we could see what the what the impact was to the brick and mortar. So my secondary piece that I had is something that I raised with the city manager, I know is not here right now. When I heard about the natural resources management plan that's on this particular list here, I heard that we were going to try to get involvement from the parks and planning. But I'm wondering where sustainability fits into that that overall plan. And so that's kind of the question I have for you, Mike, is that, and I've asked that a couple of times of the city manager, and I'm kind of wanting to figure out kind of where does sustainability fit into that. I know that our chair, Tim Sandry, has asked that. And we're wanting to figure out, you know, where does that kind of fit into that that conversation so that we're sure that that those priorities and issues are addressed? You don't necessarily need to answer that today, but that's something that we would like to 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 get response back with regard to to this plan and whatever happens with this natural resources management plan.
And I appreciate that, Councilmember Lowman. I think that's a good question. And and yes, definitely. Well, thank you for bringing that up. And we'll we'll make sure that we have an answer here shortly to to that question. Thank you for that. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. So it is maybe a question for Chair Solberg as well, or folks from the H R A. So council hasn't had any conversation yet on the S R O standards. So I'm just kind of curious, the discussion that these groups have had so far, was there a particular urgency around addressing these in 22 specifically? Or or just kind of that surrounding jurisdictions are looking at this and it kind of lines up with some of our work? I'm just kind of curious around the timing.
Mr. Chair, Councilmember, I think part of the discussion, at least on the planning commission side, is really focusing around the idea that government takes a while to action things. And we do know that there's an affordable housing crisis in the metro. And so moving that forward in this year so that we can enact something, even if it's later this year or early next year, was really the impetus for keeping that moving. And looking right now at at what are the options? We know that there's limitations in the city of Bloomington. Just getting a a good understanding of what's going on in other neighborhoods, other cities, pulling that forward and seeing what's a good fit for the city of Bloomington, considering we're also, you know, with our opportunity housing ordinance, how does that maybe work with it? So really, all those components coming together is why that's a good reason or a a good project to move forward in the near future.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Actually, a related question. Actually, a related question that I had there for Chair Solberg or for Ms. Farnham. So when we're talking single-room occupancy, I hope, could you explain it a bit more to help me better understand what we're talking about? Because basically, we have single-room occupancy. We have studio apartments in the city of Bloomington. So are we looking at smaller square footage? Are we looking at additional changes? What exactly would be, would the SRO work be looking at and hoping to accomplish?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, they don't necessarily, well, so yes, smaller rooms is part of it. Also, in a single-room occupancy, you don't necessarily have a kitchen in your room. So there might be communal kitchen services. And I guess I'll ask if anybody else here wants to jump in on the technical definitions of single-room occupancy. I do think it's, it can be more varied, but I don't know what the code is exactly if they even have to have bathrooms inside each room or if it's more kind of dormitory-like group, you know, that kind of living. But it does provide for then, yes, much smaller units and some kinds of communal services that are on-site that the residents have access to. So Mr. Markagard, I don't know if you have anything to add there or even the city attorney on the more of the technical definition of an SRO?
Yeah, Mayor Bussey, councilmembers, Julie described it very well. The big difference between SROs and efficiency or studio units is the kitchen, kitchen and sometimes even more of the living space, oftentimes being common and shared. There may be communal meals or people might just make their own meals, but in a shared area. It's really a way to get at the deeper affordability levels. We've been very successful through the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, adding affordable housing at 60% AMI, at 50% AMI. But as you know, it's very hard to get at that lower income level, 30% AMI. Single-room occupancies are one way to get at that, and we thought the timing is good, building off the county study that just completed.
Well, thank you. That's helpful to understand it a little bit better. I look forward to that discussion on that as we move forward. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. And I feel like I should start off by saying that, yes, I am sniffling. I did test negative for COVID this afternoon just to make sure. I am just the latest victim of the cold that has been circulating my house. So a couple of quick questions. As I recall, the Portland Avenue Gateway Study included some suggestions for proactive rezoning, where those, is the thought that those would be found somewhere in this American Boulevard corridor plan or the 494 corridor plan or somewhere within that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, yeah, that's pretty much is the idea. So I think that the driver really on some of that rezoning on, around the Portland area is of understanding what are the land impacts around the MINDA project? Because that's, you know, that's critical. We don't have the, all the answers to that yet. And, but it really is stretching beyond just Portland and American or Portland and 494 because of the changes proposed at Nicollet and 12th, which with the access going away, the character of those areas could change significantly, which, you know, deserves another, a closer look at the land use. And those were a little bit outside of just the Portland, the CNU project itself, which was really focused just on that intersection. So yes, it is related to that. So the idea being that we need to really not just focus on the intersection at Portland, but to look at this whole corridor because it's more dynamic.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful to know. And then I guess the only other thoughts I have, first of all, I'm really glad to see ADUs coming back. This is something that I've been thinking about for a while and I'm glad to see that we're going to be taking a look at those regulations again. And then my, just sort of other initial thoughts, I wonder if, I mean, it's been now two years since we've talked about food truck standards. I wonder if a more appropriate step before the public hearing might be that it comes back for a more sort of a discussion item and we can, you know, sort of reconfirm that that's the direction the council wants to go in, that this is something that, I guess that I should say that the language of the ordinance is the direction that the council wants to go in and that we, you know, we want to have that conversation before it gets to that public hearing. That would be my suggestion. And then the only other thought that I would mention, really just as something to consider with the multifamily parking standards, I would like to at least see some discussion, frankly, of elimination of parking minimums for multifamily housing entirely. I, you know, I frankly, over the last few years, as we've had these multifamily developments come before us, it seems to me increasingly like the better approach is to work with individual developments on an individual development basis and determine what the need is there rather than have this standard that, you know, I mean, we're seeing, you mentioned it, Julie, I think that we're just seeing a lot of deviations requested in that regard. And so I think it might just be easier for all of us and a better path forward, frankly, to consider that. So I would at least like some discussion of that moving forward. So that's all I have.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Coulter. I guess I would like to hear more from others about the food trucks because certainly we could conduct some research on kind of the economics of food trucks and how have they been faring during the pandemic and also, you know, doing some outreach to restaurants to get their perspective on it as well and come back to a study session if that is the desire of the council. We certainly could approach it that way. So I would like to get some direction on that because it sounds like at least one council member is interested in that. And then, yeah, with regard to the multifamily parking, you know, we certainly are looking at the number, the minimum required parking on-site and some of those other parking requirements. One of the challenges here will be because, as mentioned, parking is one of the key flexibility measures that is used in the OHO to make projects, well, as kind of an incentive for some of those projects. So if we just completely eliminate across the board, that reduces that particular standard as an incentive. But, you know, that is part of the discussion that we will be presenting, like I said, to Planning Commission, HRA this week and then in about a month to you all.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify with my comments on the food trucks ordinance, I'm not suggesting that we not go ahead with it. I think just the fact that it's been now close to two years since we've talked about it. I think, you know, on the specifics of the ordinance and the standards and so on, I personally think it would be helpful to have that come back as a more of a discussion item to just make sure that this is what we want to move forward with, not, you know, I mean, economic analyses are always good. I'm not, you know, going to say, no, I don't want that information. But I think just from my perspective, being, making sure that what we are putting forward for public comment and for the public hearing is really what the council wants to put forward rather than something that was discussed two years ago. So.
And I would echo that. I think a refresher course is probably a good idea. It's been two years. We've had a lot on our plates since then in those two years. And I think just a refresher to understand what we're talking about and to make sure that everybody is on the same page in terms of what we're discussing and what we're considering. I think that makes good sense. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just have a couple of things. I'm also very supportive of continuing the conversation around food trucks and supportive of a refresher conversation. And then one thing that I wanted, well, two things I want to ask about, in the notes from the Planning Commission meeting, the complete streets policy was brought up a couple of times, and I was just a little confused by that because we have a complete streets policy. And so could you just talk a little bit more about what that discussion was?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carter, I believe, and I may call on Julie Long to chime in here, but I know there was some discussion about how that might fit into that transportation strategic plan and taking a look at that. So I don't know, Julie Long or even Chair Solberg, if you can add to, kind of flesh out that response to the council member?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carter, I believe the discussion also included a relooking at our city standards. So our current street width standard is 32 feet wide. I heard from Planning Commission that there was some desire to see if we could shrink that or at least have a discussion about what our standards are in going forward. So as Julie mentioned, it would be part of the strategic transportation plan development and relooking at some of those standards.
And if I can, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, this is again John Solberg. I think part of the discussion that I mentioned earlier about staffing and recognizing that Public Works has some staffing potential challenges later this year and really trying to put and pull transportation together and how that influences land use. A land use is influencing transportation, how that affects sustainability. It really is this complete streets now that it's 20 years old. Are there different ways of looking at it today than there would be 20 years ago? I know from my professional work that we've changed substantially in 20 years. In that realm, things have become a little bit different in priorities. And so recognizing that that really does need to probably go into that strategic transportation plan, but it has to be a process that's well-thought-out and needs resources to do. And it shouldn't be something that's just, let's put it on the board and do a little refresh. Let's really take a look at it.
Thank you. So just to clarify, the conversation will happen, but it will be happen within the context of that strategic transportation plan? Or if there are next steps, it will come from that planning process?
Correct.
Okay. I am very, in general, intrigued by that conversation because we've talked about speeding so much, right? Being an issue when we know road design is one of the biggest contributors to how fast people, you know, feel comfortable driving down the road. And so I'm really excited that the Planning Commission went there and look forward to seeing how those conversations play out, whether that's in the strategic transportation plan or a future revisiting of our complete streets policy, which I would, you know, be supportive of, but also acknowledging we have a lot on the plate right now, a lot of really exciting stuff. The last point I wanted to ask about, when we've talked about the Parks Master Plan, we've talked a lot about access to parks and making sure that the bike and pedestrian infrastructure around parks is safe, especially as we redesign and reimagine parks. And so I'm wondering if that has been part of the conversation, like where does the Planning Commission fit into that? Where does the planning staff fit into those conversations when we're, you know, focused on a specific park, what that park's going to look like, and then what the surrounding transportation infrastructure will look like?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Carter, I think, you know, part of this could, some of this discussion could start as part of that strategic transportation plan. However, getting into another layer of detail, I think one of the future projects is the update to the alternative transportation plan, which, at least it's my understanding, is that the strategic plan, which is a much broader, higher-level plan, could, will provide some direction for how to focus that update on that plan. And I guess I'll turn it over to Julie Long. She might have some more specific thoughts on addressing access to parks per se.
Thank you, Julie. Julie did a good job of highlighting how it would fit into the strategic transportation plan study that we have proposed coming up. But one of the other more practical things that we do with our pavement management program, we have a scoping meeting every summer. So if we have a road that is adjacent to a park, we've invited planning and park and rec staff and a whole lot of different departments in the city to talk about those things. So for instance, we have a project coming up adjacent to Brookside Park. So we've already started those discussions of how do we improve the crossing, you know, at an intersection to make it safer to get to the park? And so we are having those discussions on a more project-based level and not the big planning scoping level, if that helps clarify some details too.
That makes sense. Thank you, Julie. I also would hope that it would be kind of the other way around. So for example, I know Trepao Park is kind of on the docket as one of the first, I believe, is going to be looked at for a mountain bike skills park. Well, I live across the street on 90th and there's no way I'd let my kids cross 90th to go to that park, even though we live right across the street. And so I would hope that planning staff are also involved in those conversations as that park is reimagined to make sure we're looking at opportunities to increase safety around the parks, even if there's not a PMP project on the horizon, even if there are other simple things. Well, I know there's nothing that's really simple, but, you know, whether we want to discuss a crosswalk or something like that. So that's the end of my comments. And I do want to thank you, Chair Solberg and Julie and Julie and Glenn for all of your hard work, the effort that you put into these things every single day and year after year. Really, really appreciate it. And it's very, very exciting to see where we're at, especially considering the past couple of years that we've had, the progress that's been made and then the things that are on our docket now and will be into the future. It's just really, really exciting. So thank you.
Council, additional questions? There are no questions. The specific input that we were looking for this evening with the three questions that were brought forward, should any of the projects on either the 2022 or 2023 and beyond list be removed? Should any projects be added to the work plan that are not currently included? Or should any projects be reprioritized to occur earlier or later? If so, what? Any input on that or is everybody happy with the work plan that has been laid out by the Planning Commission?
Mayor, this is Sean. I got a few comments, questions. I don't know if you saw my hand.
I did not see your hand. Thank you for chiming in. Councilmember Nelson?
No worries. So quickly, food trucks, I think it makes sense to refresh on that. Just one thing on 98th, I think I brought this up before, that corridor plan, if at all possible, to look at extending that to include Civic Plaza and potentially Creekside area, that whole kind of industrial corridor. And I know we're looking at doing some things at Creekside there to update that, if possible, to get that into that plan. I think that might make sense. The thing that I think needs to be moved up is what Councilmember Carter had mentioned with regards to speeding and traffic in our neighborhoods. That is the most common issue that I hear from people, concerns about the traffic in their neighborhoods, the amount of traffic, the speed of the traffic, the size of the vehicles, the cut-through traffic. And I know we've talked about that a number of times and I would really love to move forward some solutions to that because, like I said, it's something I think we all hear about. And then the one item that I would add for consideration, don't know if it fits into this year. I don't know where it would be in priorities, but I'm very concerned about large corporate ownership of single-family residential houses, taking away homeowner occupied opportunities. It's difficult for families to compete with hedge funds to buy houses, to get that generational wealth. And I'm just worried that more and more of our particular single-family housing stock is going into a rental stock. And anything we could do to help people with that ownership thing is good. And I don't know what opportunities there are, what cities have done, other cities have done on that. But I think that is a key priority for me as well. So.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson, and I apologize for not seeing you. The screen is only so ab- The screen is only so big. Sorry about that.
No worries. I'll jump in. Don't worry about it, Mayor.
I knew you would. And I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate your comments as well, Councilmember Carter, about the traffic in the neighborhoods, the speeding, the safety, and so on. It was actually, it was right here on my list of the strategies or the priorities that I think we need to absolutely push forward through within the next year to establish a comprehensive, a community-wide look at, not just enforcement, we can't just ticket our way out of this. It has to be environment, it has to be education, it has to be engagement. There's a lot of different ways we can approach this, but we've got to have a plan put together for it. And I think that absolutely needs to be near the top of any list of the things that we do moving into this year. To Councilmember Nelson's point, to Councilmember Carter's point, it's what I hear of most often when I'm out and about, when I'm talking to people. And actually just hearing about it from people, then you start to see it more often. I mean, if you are out and about or walking the dogs or whatever. And then I become the old man in the neighborhood shaking my fist at the kids who are driving too fast. But it's, I think it is an issue, and it's an issue for a lot of people, and I think it needs to be a top priority as we move forward. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to second what Councilmember Nelson said about the concern about, you know, corporations and people who, businesses that are not based in Bloomington coming in and buying up a lot of our single-family residencies and either turning them, I think my sense is that a lot of them are being flipped and resold for much higher prices. And so would just second that as a topic that I feel like we should really look into.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to comment on that, so I guess you'll hear an echo of sorts. Several folks have talked directly to me about the idea that, you know, at the end of the day, especially when the owners aren't renting those properties out directly, they have an impact to the neighborhood as a whole, right? So nobody's there monitoring what the property looks like, how it's being maintained, how many cars are parked by there, what kind of situations are occurring there, et cetera. And, you know, while I'm sensitive to the idea that there are lots of different ways to have, you know, to live in neighborhoods, we, the burden falls on the city, and the city's not necessarily getting that much benefit out of the property, you know, and the people who live there, et cetera, and certainly not benefiting from the corporations who own those. And so, you know, whether we think about that around the rental properties that are used for our students at Northwest Sciences or at Normandale Community College, et cetera, an opportunity for us to really look at that in a meaningful way. Maybe the ADU stuff can kind of dovetail into that in a meaningful way. ADUs may be owned by people who live there, and that might be a better way to do some of this stuff. But I think it's really important. The other thing I just wanted to mention, I didn't know that Hennepin County had already done an SRO study. I definitely put that on my list to take a look at right away. But, you know, having lived in Washington DC and in San Francisco and in Austin, Texas, where there are all big cities that have SRO options or at least used to, certainly in San Francisco, they're feeling the backlash of not having that now. And so I think it's, if we do it right, there's a real opportunity for some major benefit to get to that 30% AMI price point that we're really trying to get to. So I'm encouraged by the opportunity there, and I would definitely hope that we prioritize that. Thanks.
Councilmember, Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'll echo points that have been made about really continuing to prioritize owner-occupied development in the community. And I especially look at that as we're seeing more and more progress on neighborhood commercial node redevelopment, the opportunity to use that as a chance to do smart density enhancements around those commercial nodes, enhance the economic vibrancy, the foot traffic, things of that nature. And I know it was brought up most recently in the response to the council question's email, potentially looking at some of the standards around things like town home development to make it a little more simple and turnkey to submit a proposal and be able to move it through as opposed to looking at everything as a one-off and apples to oranges. So yeah, I would hope, I'm really excited about the progress that we've made on rental affordability. And I do think SROs are a good tool to continue driving that forward. But I guess my thing I'd float from my colleagues here is in the short term, spending some of that energy to try and keep our occupied on a similar track of pushing to deeper affordability because I'd hate to miss some of those owner-occupied, say, town home development opportunities because we don't have the standards in place at the time those commercial nodes are ready to flip over and see some new life, hopefully in the next few years. So yeah, I guess personally, I'd be willing to look at SROs in '23. But if folks think we can find some elbow room to get things like town homes considered in '22, I'm flexible on however we might make it happen.
Thank you, Councilmember. Counsel, is there anything else? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick follow-up on Councilmember Martin's comments. I know with regards to the town homes, we did have some concerns from residents regarding that R3 zoning and how that may have been implemented within single-family neighborhoods, how that might work at the commercial nodes and things like that. And I think that may be something that is important to look at, just given the desire to create affordable opportunities for people as well as some of those concerns that were raised by residents in terms of setbacks from streets, in terms of where does that density make sense? I think there was some, a number of thoughtful comments on there that are at least worth looking at if it fits into the work plan somewhere.
Well, Ms. Farnham, Mr. Markergard, Chair Solberg, is that enough comments for you? Is that enough input for you for the evening?
Yes, thank you, Council. That was a lot of really valuable input. I think, you know, I think we, it sounds like we have a little bit more discussion around this R3 zoning kinds of thing. But what I'm basically hearing is that you generally support the projects that are being presented here. You want to move forward with as much of that as possible. What I heard with regard to food trucks is you want to move it forward, but instead of going, just dusting off the draft ordinance and moving it forward to public hearing, that there needs to be a kind of a refresh and perhaps a little bit of at least testing the waters with the food truck industry and the restaurants to see how, you know, things have changed with the pandemic and then coming back to you with a little bit of a refresh before actually moving forward any code amendments. So we can certainly do that. Mr. Markergard or Mr. Solberg, do you have any hurting thoughts or conclusions?
Yeah, Mayor Bussie, Councilmembers, one, I guess, question would be if you prefer to move ahead this evening with adoption of the work plan or if you'd like us to come back and look at ways to incorporate a R3 town home review and potentially, it's escaping me the second, oh, the corporate ownership issue. That would probably be a study. We'd work closely with the legal department, see what other cities have done and what we can legally do. So if you'd like, we can look at ways to work that in. We'd probably come back with recommendations of what to remove to free up some hours for those.
What I might recommend, Mr. Markergard, is that we move forward with what we have here and maybe tack those on as additionals, and especially for the first steps to be study items, to try and figure out what the next steps might be and what the process would be toward that. But I would, I think if at all possible, I think it would be good if we could adopt the Planning Commission work plan tonight, get you working on it and understanding that, like every planning document, it's a living, breathing plan that if we need to adjust in the near or a bit longer term, that we certainly could do that. Councilmember DeLisandro?
I think I get like one or two at-bats at being the outsider right before I'm part of the problem here, right? Thank you, Mayor. I just want to be, if I could be blunt for just one second, if we really feel strongly that we're probably going to pass a food truck thing, I'm feeling like, can we just pass the one we have and use those hours to do one of these other things? Because what I feel I'm concerned about, to be candid with you, is that there are no hours left for anything that might come up in the beginning, you know, in the middle of the year or anything like that. And if I can echo what you all are always so lovely about, you know, being very professional and very conciliatory with the council, but I think we amongst ourselves can say, hey, we're not leaving a lot of wiggle room, to your point, Mr. Mayor, for things that might come up. And so, you know, let's not let perfect get in the way of good here, if you will. And if so, we feel pretty good about how things were. I mean, I, as somebody who's new, I got the chance to read the food truck ordinance. I had to because I'd never seen it before, right? And so we could all do that, and we could come back going, I'm cool with it. And then it would be done, and they wouldn't have to spend the 90 or so hours that might have been in the work plan doing that, and they can move on to the R3 thing, for example. So I throw that out there as an idea for us to consider, just to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, we have a staff here who is asking us to be, you know, specific about their time and the priorities we give them. So thank you for letting me say that.
And thanks for the input. I appreciate that and appreciate the perspective. Councilmember Lohman?
You know, Mayor, I share that opinion. I think that, I mean, other than, you know, bringing the public back up to kind of where we're at, I think that'd be a great way to kind of open up some additional time. You know, the only thing I'm concerned about, I think, could easily be done by staff by bringing back some type of economic report. But as I recall, most of the council was pretty much, was there in support. I think I was the only one who had additional questions, and I'm ready to move this. So if that's a way to open up additional time, I think that could be conducted, Mayor. I don't know what you think. That's kind of a different approach, but I'm just concerned about our commercial pieces. But I trust staff to bring something back that we could look at and see if it makes time to, makes sense to move forward with that.
Well, I do think the, you know, the suggestion about the economic impact was yours, Councilmember Lohman. I think we were considering it from that perspective. And I think, I honestly don't think, to bring it back and to brush it off and to have the discussion again, I don't see 90 hours in there. I could be wrong. I think at least somebody brought that forward, I think, Councilmember Martin, I think you brought that forward in questions regarding this, that I don't know that we were that far away on it. I would be happy to do that. I would also defer to staff to, they know their work schedules better than others and how we can do this. I always appreciate how you're able to break down by the hour, how long it's going to take everything. I always kind of look at it sideways because I'm not sure how you can do that, but I appreciate the effort to actually try and do that. So I mean, I would, I think it would be possible to do somewhere a happy medium. I agree to free up time that we can't keep just piling things on and keep asking them to do more and more and more. But I also have confidence in our staff to figure out how to make this all work and how to make it all come together. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm, you know, I'm certainly open to exploring alternatives and yes, obviously, you know, the more time we can give staff to do other things, the better. My concern is, you know, it's been, like I said, two years since we really talked about this. And, you know, admittedly, it's been two years, and there's kind of been a lot of life in those two years. But my, you know, my recollection, for example, is that the original proposed ordinance maybe didn't go as far as some of us would have liked. And given that we have a new council, that perspectives may have changed in those two years, there may be, there may be a desire for more significant changes to what the, that original ordinance was. And my, I'm always wary of legislating from the dais like that without having an opportunity to discuss it and run things through legal and, you know, do all those things that are involved with the legislative process at the local level. So I'm not opposed to that. I just want to make sure that if there, if there is a desire to go in a significantly different direction, which there may well be after two years, after a pandemic, after any number of other changes, that we have the space to allow for that. And I am, given my experience with public hearings, I'm a little bit wary of doing that kind of on the fly, taking that approach. And so that, to me, is why that discussion seemed to make more sense, is to bring it up in that way so that we can talk through it, that we can hash through the details and, like I said, get to a place that the council's comfortable, comfortable moving forward with a public hearing. And, you know, of course, there can always be changes made. But, you know, to me, I always feel like once we get to a public hearing, that's really more sort of tinkering around the edges and maybe addressing some last-minute concerns that have come up and then voting on the ordinance itself rather than that more involved legislative process. So that's the concern I have. I'm not, you know, I'm not going to stand here and like filibuster a different direction. But that's, that's just something, like I said, I want to make sure we have the space to do our sort of due diligence when it comes to the policy side of that, to make sure that it really lines up with what we want to do here and now, rather than just, oh, this was fine two years ago, let's put it on the books.
Mr. Sable?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I was just going to weigh in briefly that I think that the bulk of the work that's been sort of framed up for the drafting of the ordinance is probably there, but I do think it's important to recognize that the world has shifted pretty dramatically. And so I don't know that a review of sort of the economic factors that might have changed in the last two years would take the staff a significant amount of time to adjust and adapt. And so I think there's probably maybe a hybrid solution that we can do some analysis about what some of those changes are and actually look to see if there's other communities that have also made a similar change in this sort of timeframe. So I think there's probably an opportunity to have a hybrid where we can move more quickly than we would have maybe forecasted, but use the ordinance itself as kind of a base moving forward. And so I think there's probably an opportunity for staff to put our heads together and come up with a game plan that lists out kind of the timeline, maybe in a little revised way. We look forward to finding the perfect solution.
Thank you, Mr. Sable. And I think you're right. I think it's, there's a hybrid solution in there somewhere. I don't think it needs to be an either-or or this and, I mean, it can be an and as opposed to an either-or. So I would recommend that we move forward expecting staff can handle what we're asking them to do in that hybrid type of manner where it's not a, we don't just vote on what we had, that we do review what we've had, and that it gives us an opportunity to review, as Mr. Sable said, the changing marketplace over the last couple of years and see how that might impact any decision we might have. Councilmember Lohman?
I think we've, both you and the manager have put forward, I think, a pretty good compromise piece. And if there isn't any other discussion, I'd be happy to move this forward, move this motion forward tonight.
I will take you up on that in just one moment. As I asked one last time, are there any other questions or comments from council on this? Hearing none. Councilmember Lohman?
Obviously, I think you've framed it up well, that staff will take into account the new items. Do you think we need to add anything to this or what we have here is sufficient? If I could go ahead and move to approve the 2022 Planning Commission work plan with the additions that were discussed today?
I think that would be the appropriate way to say it, with additions as discussed this evening. So we have a motion by Councilmember Lohman. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lohman, a second by Councilmember Coulter to approve the 2022 Planning Commission work plan with the additions discussed by the council this evening. Hearing no further discussion on this? Mr. Brillert?
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
DeLisandro?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Ms. Farnham, Mr. Markergard, you and your staff do outstanding work and always have. I really do appreciate it. Ms. Long, thank you for the engineering work that goes into all of the work, all of the planning department work that goes on. And Chair Solberg, thanks for joining us this evening, and thanks for your leadership on the Planning Commission. And please extend our thanks to the rest of the Planning Commission members as well for their service and their commitment to the city of Bloomington. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 8.2 on this evening's agenda, which is a report from the Earned, Sick and Safe Leave Task Force. And no action on this, this is a discussion item. I'm going to send it over to We'll move on to item eight point two on this evening's agenda, which is a, a report from the Earned Sick and Safe Leave Task Force. And, uh, no action on this. This is a discussion item. I'm going to send it over to, uh, Mr. Sable to kick this off and we will get into this discussion. Mr. Sable?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. If you give me one moment while I promote our new presenters. And they are there. Uh, well, thank you, Mayor, and, uh, councilmembers. Uh, this item was originally discussed back in February of 2021, when the council directed staff to begin exploring the development of a earned sa- uh, sick and safe leave ordinance, uh, for council consideration. Um, the council has discussed this item a number of times. Uh, in April, it was sort of framed up to create a task force to develop this, uh, draft ordinance. Uh, the task force members were, uh, appointed in June of 2021 and began working, uh, in June and July, uh, in earnest in sort of the development of the, uh, draft ordinance that's before you today for discussion, uh, and some feedback. There was also a, uh, a feedback effort for not only business owners in the city of Bloomington, but also, um, restaurant workers and retail workers who would be, uh, most impacted by this in, uh, late summer and early fall. Uh, the group then reconvened in, um, Au- October of this year and worked through just before Thanksgiving on, uh, draft ordinance, uh, that's before you. I will say that as a staff member who joined halfway through, uh, I was, uh, impressed and inspired by the discussion and the level of, uh, input and quality of the thinking that went into this, and really kind of wrestling with the trade offs. And I think the conversation that you're going to hear tonight from Nat Anderson-Lippert, who was a task force member, and Peter Zuniga, the City Attorney, uh, Civil Division, really kind of highlight the, the, I think what really is kind of a good policy debate that was there. Uh, so we want to thank and recognize the task force members for the incredible work that they did. Uh, but Mayor, if there's in, uh, nothing further from the, you or the council, I'll turn it over to Nat Anderson-Lippert, who can, uh, jump forward. And, and Nat, if you would unmute yourself and, and there you go.
Good evening, Mr. Anderson-Lippert. Welcome.
Uh, Mr. Councilmembers, uh, thank you. And thank you, Mike, for, um, for kicking that off. Uh, I appreciate you having me as a representative of the task force. Uh, and I know that we have, uh, limited time, so I'm going to try to be brief. Um, but just briefly, I'll say, you know, we, I'm about, uh, I will share about nine slides. I'm just kind of give an overview. I know many of you are pretty familiar with this issue already. Um, but I want to touch on a few specifics and draw out a couple considerations for, um, the council. And I will start, uh, I'm, uh, here on the task force as a resident of Bloomington. And, um, I do just want to give my big appreciation for the city staff, um, that have, uh, kind of ushered us through this process and made it, uh, easy for us who are working full time to be, uh, participating in this process fully and kind of capturing the most salient features of it and, and having good discussion. So, uh, my caveat is that I'm not an employment lawyer. I will happily, um, kick the harder questions to Peter Zunica. Um, and, uh, and I appreciate his work, uh, really making it easy for us to capture, like, what are the, the things that we really need to be considering for this policy? So if you give me one moment, uh, I'm going to try to share my screen. And I will say, uh, if there are other members of the task force here tonight, you're, please do weigh in as well. Okay. Um, so overall, I, uh, I know, um, Mike gave a, a good synopsis of the process, so I won't go into kind of who all was on the task force and our meetings. Uh, but I will just say, uh, this is a, a very important time to be considering an earned sick and safe leave policy, as you all know. Um, and that's where I want to start. Um, so, uh, Kate Ebert, um, uh, from Public Health did a great job capturing kind of some of these points to us as a task force early on. And I just wanted to reiterate a few of them here. Uh, I know many of you are familiar with this issue, but broadly speaking, uh, you know, through her research, she found that nearly 40% of US adults report that they do not have any paid sick leave through their employer. Uh, again, uh, in this stage of the pandemic, I'll just say briefly, most of our work meeting as a task force was during a part of the pandemic where we were feeling a little more optimistic about where things were headed. And, uh, right now, uh, that's, I, that, uh, seems to me to be a pretty salient point. Um, 2019, the median cost of, of wages was $150. Uh, one in five Americans is a caregiver for an adult. Um, and, you know, virtually everyone reports working while sick. Um, and during the, uh, H1N1 outbreak, you know, it was estimated specifically that five to seven million Americans, uh, contracted the flu through, uh, a lack of paid sick leave. Uh, one, in addition, one in four women and one in 10 men experienced sexual violence, physical violence, and/or stalking, um, with outcomes of, of one in five female victims and one in 20 male victims needing medical care. Um, this slide, to me, really captures, like, this is broadly a, a huge equity issue, uh, and a need for this policy, that, uh, nearly half of Latinx workers and over a third of black workers report having no paid time away from work of any kind. Um, and paid sick leave programs have led to improved infant health, uh, with the largest impact on the most disadvantaged mothers. So, uh, what I took away from our, uh, the earlier part of our meetings as a task force, um, implementation of paid, uh, sick leave is, uh, you know, it very much an equity issue. Um, again, many of you, I think, are familiar with this, but broadly speaking, um, ordinances around paid sick leave are, cover medical issues involving the employee or a family member, um, absences due to domestic abuse, sexual assault, or stalking, as I mentioned, and in the mid, in the case of Minneapolis, emergency closure of school or place of care. Um, and I mentioned Minneapolis because in our work, uh, we really were of the, a lot of our policy discussions were framed around three existing ordinances in Minnesota. Uh, Minneapolis and St. Paul were both, both, I think, passed in 2016. Minneapolis implemented in 2017, and St. Paul was phased in over 2017 and 18. Uh, Duluth, I believe, was approved in 2018 and finally implemented in 2020. So, um, as I said, in terms of process, uh, we were fortunate to have many Bloomington staff, um, you know, helping us understand this process and walk through it. Uh, I will say, I know, um, Mike touched on low engagement in online survey, or in, in the stakeholder engagement process. I think there was a, a sincere attempt to break the meetings into kind of two phases. Uh, the first three meetings in the summer with a break for stakeholder engagement, and then the second three meetings this fall. Um, there were, you know, I, I didn't put the exact numbers in here, but I believe in the single digits of, uh, survey responses, there was an employer survey and an employee survey. And I think between the two, uh, we're talking about in the, you know, a few dozen surveys, um, submitted. So, one of the considerations, I think, moving forward is how to get significantly more stakeholder engagement, uh, with, uh, this policy. Um, and, you know, uh, you know, the, the city manager really set a good tone of striving for consensus from the outset. Um, but naturally, with, uh, a large group of, you know, differences of opinion, there are some outstanding issues left to consider for the council. So some of those broad areas of consideration, kind of going into these, these policy discussions. Of course, the public health impact, how can you maximize the impact of such policy, uh, in Bloomington? Um, how, you know, even before the, um, question of compliance, um, you know, how do you reach all the employers in Bloomington? There's some logistical considerations. Um, you know, some of the representatives on the task force, uh, from employers that work in multiple municipalities made clear that, you know, there's an, a question of ease across municipalities of implementing relatively similar policies across the metro area. Um, and there was a question of community infrastructure, or, a- as well as city infrastructure. So, um, who can ensure compliance, you know, and are there relevant partners in the community that can help with that? Um, additionally, you know, of course, specific types of employers, large and small, and then the rates of specific employees, uh, types of employees were considered. So, really, the nuts and bolts, um, I wanted to just frame, and, um, Peter can go much more into detail on these. I think he's probably memorized these policies across the, uh, different municipalities. But, um, the, the basic mechanism for earning, uh, sick and safe leave in the ordinances, uh, is an hour earned for 30 hours worked. And I believe that's in, uh, in Minneapolis and St. Paul, and it's a higher threshold, uh, in Duluth, um, for every 50 hours worked in Duluth. Um, a maximum of 48 hours earned per year and 80 unused hours at any time. Uh, and employees may use, uh, up to, or may use the leave, uh, 90 days, after 90 days of employment. So, I should say, this is, uh, Peter and others worked on kind of a draft ordinance based on the three, uh, and this is, uh, roughly where it's at. So, um, definition of employee is someone who works at least 80 hours in a year. And then there's a question of exemptions that came up, um, in our conversations. You know, current exemptions that are, that were considered were extended, uh, employment program workers. These are workers with severe disabilities or severe impairment to employment, uh, independent contractors, student interns. And then there was a lot of discussion of, uh, seasonal employees. This was one area. I missed the, uh, final meeting of our task force, uh, due to the arrival of our second child. And, um, the, I believe this is one area where the task force actually voted, uh, in favors not exempting seasonal employees. Next slide. Um, a couple other things to highlight in terms of, uh, task force recommendations. Um, you know, the policy very explicitly is about, uh, earned sick and safe leave for an employee or family, which, uh, as Peter helped us understand, many of the, um, considerations for this are in the definitions of the terms in the policy, right? So, um, the, I believe as the, the recommended ordinance is written, uh, it includes an, an inclusive definition of family, not just a traditional definition, um, to have a more expansive application. Uh, significantly, there's a question across the three ordinances of what to do about large and small employers. And they've dealt with this in different ways. Um, this, uh, the, the draft ordinance, uh, it, most mirrors, I believe, and Peter can, uh, correct me if this is wrong, but Minneapolis ordinance of six or more employer, employers with six or more employees, uh, giving paid leave, and then the smaller employers giving, uh, unpaid leave. Um, it includes a rebuttable presumption of retaliation, meaning that if there's any meaningful change to terms of employment or conditions of employment within 90 days, um, you, the employee can presume that it was related to, uh, taking advantage of earned sick and safe leave, rebuttable by the employer in this case. Um, so our recommendation includes a graduated fine structure, um, based on St. Paul ordinance, uh, meaning that the more, I, I believe the more, um, times an, an employer would violate this policy, the, uh, fines would increase, um, accordingly. Uh, and, uh, a private right of action, which I believe is not included in either the Minneapolis or St. Paul ordinance, uh, but is in Duluth, uh, has been recommended as well. So these are a, those are a few, drilled down to a few specifics. Um, I just want to say as a task force member, uh, you know, in addition to, you know, Tracy Smith helped us think about kind of the community outreach parts and Kate Ebert about public health, um, Faith Jackson from the city of Bloomington was very helpful in framing some of the equity considerations for this policy. And I wanted to end with a slide about that because I do think they, some of the questions in her presentation to us are relevant for, um, council's consideration of, um, a few of these points, in my view. And one being, have the stakeholders from different racial and ethnic groups, especially those most directly impacted, been meaningfully involved in this process? Um, I would say based on stakeholder input that we, uh, attempted to have happened in the summer, I would say not yet. And I hope that that's something that the council, uh, is able to encourage and act on. Um, you know, the question, are the, are the actions impacts aligned with the desired outcome? To me, there are a couple policy questions involved there, uh, or points in the, um, draft ordinance, such as whether, uh, you know, I, I don't have the statistics on, for example, uh, employer, how many employees, uh, that work in Bloomington work for employers, five or smaller, uh, with five or fewer employees, right? And, and what that group is and what the demographics are, is that, I would want to see that. Um, and what resources or partnerships do you need to be successful, um, specifically with community organizations? So, those are a few of the questions that I am, um, you know, thinking about. And, uh, for the more technical questions, I know that, um, Peter will be happy to answer, but I'm happy to share my perspective on any of that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson-Lippert. Appreciate it. Appreciate your work on the, on the task force and appreciate the work of the, the, the task force members. I know this wasn't a small, uh, a small job, wasn't a small task for the task force. So thank you for doing that. Council questions, comments? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I can, I can kick this off here, but, um, so as far as, uh, the size of business covered, I'm wondering, does the Minneapolis ordinance, um, does it, uh, stipulate any difference between full time or part time employees? I mean, is it, is it just however many employees you have regardless of, of full or part time status?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, the Minneapolis ordinance doesn't distinguish between full or part time or employees, or, um, i- if it is based off the number of employees in a certain calendar year. And so if you have, uh, five or more employees or six more employees, uh, it requires paid time enough.
Okay, okay. Thank you. That's helpful. And then, um, I may have more questions later, but off the top of my head, um, I know one of the, the concerns that I have is an increasing reliance on businesses classifying their employees, just classifying all employees as independent contractors. Has there been any discussion, this is probably more of a, a Nat question, has there been any discussion on, on finding a way to address that, to, to, you know, and understanding that there are, obviously there are legitimate business uses for that independent contractor status. But, um, my, my concern is that it just becomes kind of a backdoor to, to get out of some of these things. Oh, sorry. So the, the question there is just, is, was there any discussion about, uh, any kind of, um, way to address, address that sort of backdoor concern that I referenced?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, I don't, um, believe so, aside from potentially in the follow up to, uh, in discussion of compliance in Minneapolis, I think is probably the best, uh, example that we have. And I, um, would probably, uh, defer to Peter on that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, right now, the, the definition of employer does exclude the independent contractor. Uh, but to my recollection, and maybe Mike Sable can correct me, um, most of the discussion at the task force centered around whether we would exclude seasonal employees, and then also, um, quite a bit of discussion around, you know, how we would handle remote workers, uh, kind of given, you know, what's going on now. And the idea or concept of remote workers, uh, really wasn't being talked about when the other three ordinances were implemented.
Okay. Uh, thank you. That, I'm, like I said, I may have more later, but that's all for now.
Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember Lohman. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I've got a few questions here. Um, and I appreciate that the idea of the remote workers was brought up because that was one of the areas that I was confused by is how that applied, um, both if people are working, uh, full time remote, but now a lot of people are working part time remote, like even if they're full time, they may work a couple hours at home. I mean, I'm at home in this meeting. There's a number of us joining here where, you know, presumably staff is considered to be working during this meeting and, uh, but from home. And so how, how is that addressed? How does that work within this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I would like to tell you that we have it all figured out and we have that issue solved. Um, but if you notice in the draft ordinance that we did provide, um, under the definition of employee, remote worker is highlighted and has an asterisk. So that's to be determined. We're still trying to do some research of how the issues you just talked about, uh, impact the ordinance and, and the employees working, you know, in hybrid situations or 100% remotely.
Okay. And, and just as you consider that, I mean, you know, one other thing, just, um, you know, I didn't know a lot of people take phone calls, uh, when they're home and things like that. And so it's, uh, it, it gets tricky. So appreciate that you're working on that. One of the other areas I wanted to look at is, and I think I know some of the answers, but like, people that traverse through the city as part of their job, as an example, a courier, would their time driving through the city to deliver a package outside of the city be counted as part of this? And then as a separate thing, what about those people that are transporting things, you know, like Amazon, UPS within the city? How, how did, but maybe they're doing some in Bloomington, somebody Dyna, somebody in Prairie, how does that work?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, the ordinance would cover any employee that spends any time working within the geographic boundaries of the city. So in your, your example of the Amazon worker delivering packages within the city, the amount of time that they spend within the geographic boundaries would count toward their accrual of the safe and sick leave.
Okay, and I did see in Minneapolis's FAQ that simply driving through the city, even if it was work, did not count, but that they actually had to do, for lack of a better term, work in the city. So just something to look at in terms of how Minneapolis is handling that. See, there was, I had a question on the pay rate. What about people that are paid based on a commission exclusively? How, how do you, how would an employer calculate what they're owed for sick time?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, so right now, the definition of the regular rate of pay includes the employee's hourly rate, including payments for shift differentials, or if the employee is not hourly, the equivalent rate for an exempt employee. The regular rate of pay does not include tips, commissions, reimbursements for expenses, premium payments such as overtime, bonuses, cash or things like that.
Okay. And then, am I correct in understanding that the only way you could earn the, or not earn, the only way you get paid it is if you were scheduled to work in Bloomington as well? So it's not just that you get it for the hours that you work in Bloomington, but you have to be scheduled to work in Bloomington to get, to get the sick or safe pay?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, right now, the way the ordinance reads is that you are only able to, to use the accrued time for tho, that time that you're scheduled to work within the city. However, it does not prevent the employer from allowing the employee to use the accrued time when they are scheduled to work elsewhere.
So the question that I have there then is what does scheduled mean? Because as I mentioned earlier in the evening, my daughter works retail at a store in the Mall of America, and they do schedules every week. So if, you know, had a significant event with a child or yourself and you needed a couple of weeks off, would that second week where you weren't scheduled at all, you would no longer be eligible to receive this benefit?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I think in that case where the person is assigned to work within the location, you know, and the location is here within Bloomington, they would be covered to, to use the accrued time in that situation.
So if they had an expectation that they would be working that week, they, they could use it within?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, good to know. What about people that stay here? We have a num, we have an airport, we have a number of pilots, flight attendants that stay at hotels because of their work here. Would they be covered by this? Or is that not considered work that they're staying here overnight?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I don't know how the employer would consider that if that is considered work time or not, but that is something that we can look into.
Okay, and, and part of my interest in that is I don't want to negatively impact our hotels and businesses within the community either, so. See here, um, does our ordinance require this to be a separate amount of time that is accrued from other paid time offs? So, or can this be integrated within a overall paid time off program?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, the ordinance does allow it to be integrated into existing policies as long as it meets the minimums within the ordinance.
Okay, alright. Does this allow, is this sick and safe time, but for time off in the, if a, a parent or a, a close immediate family member passes away?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I am unsure of that right now. I can look into that and get back to you.
Okay, and then last question, can you talk a little bit more about the rebuttable presumption of retaliation in the first ninety days? Can you further explain that? I was a little confused by what that is and, and how that works.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, what the rebuttable presumption of retaliation is, is that if an employee tries to exercise their rights under this ordinance, so they want to actually use some of the accrued sick, safe and sick leave, or if they bring to the attention of their employer that they are required to provide sick and safe leave. And within ninety days of, of that request or mentioning, you know, the need to comply, the employer changes the terms and conditions of the employee. So, you know, reassigns them to different positions, lowers their hourly rate, certainly discharging them. You know, the, the ordinance would create presumption that the employer took those actions to retaliate against the employee for exercising their rights under the ordinance. And then it becomes a burden shifting. The employee, the employer can then present a legitimate reason why they took those actions. It may be a decrease in business, you know, it could be, you know, the short, staffing shortage in other areas. So that led to a reassignment.
Okay, so essentially the burden would shift to the employer and they would need to make sure they documented the reason for it and it had to be a, a reason outside of retaliating.
That is correct.
Okay, um, last area of questioning that I have quickly, there was some, in the ordinance, it talks about posting on job sites and each employer has to post on a job site. And just wanted to kind of talk through the practical consequences of like a, a large commercial construction project where there may be fifty or more employers there. Would, is there a way to just have one posting there instead of fifty separate postings from each employer?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, yeah, I think we could, you know, arrange that. Part of what the ordinance does require is that the city attorney's office would develop the posting that would be required. And so if it is at the specific location, I think that would satisfy the ordinance.
Okay, and then the, the other part of that is, you know, let's take a landscape contractor working on homes, doing driveways, patios, things like that in the city. Would they be required to make that type of posting at somebody's house?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I don't think we've dug into that level of detail yet. It may be that it's actually at the office or, you know, somewhere where they get their equipment. You know, the ordinance does require the city attorney's office to develop administrative rules to provide some guidance on how we would enforce this. And that would be something that we would probably address in the administrative rules.
Okay, great, thank you. And I believe that's how Minneapolis handles it, they have a poster noticing, I believe it's at the office. So that, that's why I was hoping, because I just, you know, posting things at someone's house is a, is a little challenging. So thank you very much, I appreciate the time.
Councilmember Lowman.
Uh, thank you, just a few questions here. So as I'm digging into this and I'm looking at it, I see that it's ninety days, the way that this is written, that you would be eligible for, is, is that true? Is that, is my understanding of that, that correct? So what happens in that ninety day period of time if a, if an employee gets sick? Help me understand how that works with this policy.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, during those ninety days, the employee would be accruing the earn, safe and sick leave. But right now, as drafted, they wouldn't be able to use it. You know, certainly that was the starting point because that's how the Minneapolis, you know, Duluth and St. Paul ordinance were drafted. But certainly, you know, the task force and staff would look for council direction on whether we would want to shorten that timeframe.
No, it's certainly something I'm going to raise later on is continuity. But I guess I'd like to understand why the standard is, is at ninety days as opposed to sixty or thirty? Is that something that, you know, the, the task force a, as general kind of thought, hey, yep, that's a good timeframe? What's, what's the rationale behind the ninety days? I get it as an employer, you want to have folks do that, but there's a lot of larger employers who just say, you know what? Once you've been here, you're on, on the, you're working here thirty days or, or immediately you get. Help me understand why the ninety days?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, really the discussion at the task force, in particular with ninety days, was actually related just to the continuity with the Minneapolis ordinance. And, and maybe Nat can, can talk about this a little bit more. But, you know, when we had discussions on certain timeframes, the, the task force really did say, let's just, you know, be consistent with, with, in particular Minneapolis. And so that was the extent of the discussion around the ninety days, to my recollection.
So I see here that, that if a person is out for three consecutive days, that there's a reasonable documentation that the person is sick. Now, in some of those occasions where we have these employees who are working, they don't have access to a medical provider. How is that going to be handled? What's reasonable, who can provide that information? Help me understand, we, we talked about equity here. If, if the employee, employer is not required to provide a, you know, some type of medical care, is this a, a type of thing that is provided, but then cannot be, you can't, you basically, you can't be able to utilize it because you have no way of providing any documentation? Help me understand, if I understand that, that piece correctly, and how is that afforded or handled?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, I don't recall, you know, this being discussed at the task force. And so I don't think the task force thought of that issue. And maybe Nat would want to weigh in, but, you know, that would be certainly an area that we could look at further.
Yeah, we don't need, we don't have to get the answer now, but I, I'd like, I'd like us to look at that because that's a concern that I have, folks kind of falling through the cracks. You know, you create this policy and, and folks just aren't able to utilize it past the three days. And so what I'm trying to understand is, I, I know on the other hand, you know, given my, my day job, I, I get that you're trying to enforce this thing, in fact, we, my job, I'm dealing with the Minneapolis way of, of handling it. But, you know, but on the other hand, you really can't utilize the process if the, if the company doesn't provide. And I understand that for smaller employers, that may be difficult to do. But I want to understand, how is that enforced? How is that used? And even from a data perspective, if there is any data out there from smaller employers, I want to, I'd like to know how, if this provision is consistent with what's going on there, how that is impacting, or how many people are able to actually utilize this, this, this thing before they, you know, I mean, are terminated? So that'd be information I'd like to get back on that, if we look into that. Unless there's a comment on that, I've got a couple of other things here. From a rolling perspective, so when we get to eighty hours in the year, when you get to the next year, do you start all over again? What happens to those sick times that is accrued? Can that go past the eighty hours? And if that's the case, you know, why, why eighty hours? You're sick or you're trying to take care of several different kids. So for example, we've got folks who end up having, let's say COVID. You got one kid and they got to be out for seven, you know, the, the state mandate right now is seven days. You got two different kids, two separate times, that would exhaust that time. So just trying to understand why the eighty hours?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, again, this goes back to the task force discussion around consistency with Minneapolis. And then this is what Minneapolis had within their ordinance. You know, I will say that you are allowed to carry over forty-eight hours of accrued time from calendar year to calendar year. You know, but we can certainly look at, you know, increasing the eighty hours.
The eighty hours plus the forty-eight hours? I wasn't clear if it was eighty hours, but then, you know, I, I just wasn't clear. So it's eighty plus the forty-eight, or how, how does that work?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, it'd be eighty hours total. So you could carry over forty-eight hours into the next calendar year. And then you get to, you know, you can accrue no more than eighty hours. And so if you carry over forty-eight hours and you use forty hours, you would still start to accrue or still continue to accrue over the, the calendar year. So you can accrue more. But I also note that under the ordinance, there's nothing that will prohibit the employer from allowing the employee to accrue more than eighty hours. If the employer wishes to adopt a policy that allows for more, the employer can.
And I guess then, I understand we're trying to keep it in terms of continuity. But if we look across the country, is this eighty hours pretty standard? You know, for other, other states that are, that are doing this? I'm just curious about, you know, how they handle that, that piece. And that's another thing you could, you could come back with. My last piece that I have here, Mayor, is in terms of the, the enforcement piece of this, I was looking at that and it looks like it, it's a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine. This is under that twelve-point-five-eight, you know, the, the relief and administrative penalties. Help me understand how that gets, is it for each instance? Or is it for, how does, how does that work in terms of that two-hundred-and-fifty? And is that the limit? You know, for a small employer, that might be prohibitive, but for a large employer, you know, that's, you know, kind of a snack.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, first, it would be reinstatement and back pay to the employee. You know, so that was the task force's main concern is ensuring that the employee was credited with back pay as well as their any accrued time. So the, the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, that would be payable, you know, per, per violation, per same employee. And so if, if the employer, employer denied the employee the ability to use accrued safe and sick leave, you know, this, the option would be two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And then if the employer had a second violation against the same employee, it'd be an additional two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
So help me understand what a, what constitutes a violation? So is it one occurrence? So in terms of if I deny you, you know, two or three days in a row, is each one of those days a separate occurrence? Or is it that I denied you those five days that are consecutive? Plus you came back after a week and asked for another three days and that's a separate occurrence? Or is it one employee, I deny you, that's one occurrence?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, I don't think I have a good answer for you right now. That would be something we would have to look into.
Okay, I think that how that's defined, I think back to our, our, our trash ordinance and that level of detail. If we decided to pass this, if we don't have that level of specificity, you know, folks can kind of drive their way through that. And I'd be concerned that again, we have, have an ordinance that wouldn't have any teeth that we couldn't enforce and, and folks are denying things and it's just all one, one occurrence. So I'd like to get some clarity around that. And of course, I already mentioned it though, how do we, how do we take, how do we look at continuity between Minneapolis and St. Paul? But I don't want that to be a barrier for, for providing the best experience for the employee. Of course, I also want to understand what that impact is to the employer as well, what that means. But I don't want that to be at an expense of creating an environment for the, for the employee. Thank you.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, folks, for doing this great work. Mr. Anderson Lippert, you and the task force have obviously done a lot of good stuff here, thank you. And thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to just ask two quick things. And thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to just ask two quick things. One, I don't, I didn't see it in the packet, so if we do have any information on the effectiveness of the policies as they've been implemented so far, meaning to some degree, is 48 hours, you know, in a given year, for example, enough, or is that kind of thing? So, you know, are people taking advantage of it, and is it actually practically helpful? You know, especially, maybe that's skewed by the pandemic right now, of course, but in a practical, you know, if we have any data on that, I would love to know about that, especially since, you know, local level policies like this are, you know, it wouldn't it be nice if the state or federally, we could get this stuff done, and then we wouldn't have to worry about this so much? But, so what is that effectiveness? If we have any data on that, I'd love to see that. And then on the flip side of that, of course, the expense side of that is, you know, given that the burden is going to fall on the city attorney's office, you know, and I don't know if attorneys in the go, you've looked into this at all, but what is the cost of enforcement? Are we going to have to add staff and things like that in order to support this? Again, I'd love to see Department of Labor or some other place where we could get some funding so that, you know, so if they won't do their job, they'll give us the money that we, we need to do the job for them. But if we have anything on that, that'd be great, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I will say that in part of our budget discussions this year, part of that was additional staffing within the city attorney's office to take this on, and a couple of other things that, and it was, it was discussed in terms of the timing of the implementation, if we went forward with this, what the timing of the implementation would be, and when that person would then be required, and so on and so forth. So, yes, that has been considered. Councilmember Carter, in just a minute, I think Mr. Anderson Lippert wanted to chime in here. Mr. Anderson Lippert?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. I was just responding to Councilmember Lohman, and so just to weigh in to say that the 90-day question in terms of application was definitely raised and discussed significantly within the task force, in exactly that context of what are the, you know, what might be the barriers to taking advantage of this policy? Specifically, you know, at the mall, for example, I think Councilmember Coulter was pointing to this as well, with like, does this apply to part-time jobs? Well, if you're, if you work less than 80 hours in a year, it does not. So that's, you know, if you're working eight hours a week for less than 10 weeks, it would not apply, right? For more than 10 weeks, it would, but the other way, that if you're working a four-month job at the mall, you would have, you would take advantage of this for one month. So I just wanted to say that definitely was addressed by the task force without resolution, but was raised as a concern, for sure.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So a lot of, this has been a very thorough discussion, and a lot of questions have been asked, which I really appreciate, and I want to thank you for being part of this task force, and thank the task force for all the hard work that's gone into this ordinance. So I just have one quick request, and maybe this is already going to happen, and I missed it somewhere, but I think it would be really helpful to have the Advisory Board of Health review and weigh in on this. I know for a fact that at least one of the members is very, very interested in kind of, in getting a hold of this, and really digging in, and could also provide some support possibly on kind of some of that research on the effectiveness, and what we're seeing in other communities who have adopted these kinds of policies. And then I'm not sure, when you did the community engagement, if you were working with our coed department, but if not, it would probably be helpful to engage them so that we can try to reach more people who will be directly impacted by this policy. So, thank you.
Mr. Sable?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, to that point, we did engage with the Community Outreach and Engagement Division staff, the coed staff, and Tracy Smith did a really great job of trying to get out the word electronically. I think one of the logistical challenges, and I think we probably realized this too late, is if you're really wanting to get sort of direct input, it would probably require direct canvassers, you know, walking the mall and talking to employers and talking to employees, and that's a sizable cost that we didn't know that we could take on in the moment. So I think, you know, if you're wanting to get really robust community engagement, that would be a fairly expensive endeavor to do. So we will take a second crack at getting some more, maybe not as high-touch, but more direct feedback electronically another time, and I think if the, you know, the council direction is to go forward, I think our community engagement strategy can be modified to include commissions, advisory boards, and then, you know, a little bit more direct input from the community, and I think the business communities especially, I think they're, you know, knowing some business owners in this community, they were focused on sort of the day-to-day, and they weren't thinking about this policy, and now that it becomes sort of front and center in front of them, I think our opportunity to engage more goes up.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one last thing, sort of picking on, picking up on some things that other folks have mentioned. You know, I think we are, one advantage that we have is that, you know, we have three other cities in the state that have done this, right? And I think this, this ordinance does a really good job of sort of combining, hopefully, the best, the best pieces of each ordinance separately, but I would be curious to know, if at all possible, you know, the investigation side, it looks like is more closely aligned with the ordinance from Duluth, and the relief piece of that is more closely aligned with St. Paul. You know, to the greatest extent possible, it would be, I'd be curious to know kind of what success those cities have found with those pieces? Have they, have they found that to be a practical way of doing things? Have they found success in terms of ensuring compliance with those pieces and that kind of thing? I think that would just be helpful information to have. And then the other piece, really, I guess, is probably more of a comment to the council generally. You know, I think there is a piece, you know, that consistency with the Minneapolis ordinance does make a lot of sense, right? It doesn't, it's more challenging for employers when they have to cross, when folks have to cross city lines, if there are differences. I think that does make a lot of sense. I think, you know, we want to be cautious that we are still crafting the best policy, the policy that is going to best serve workers here in Bloomington. And I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, going for that consistency for its own sake, but that we are moving forward good policy, understanding that the implementation side of this will require some things be consistent. For myself, I will personally just say that my preference is that it covers all employers, regardless of size, that, you know, folks be able to earn sick and safe leave, regardless of whether they work for Best Buy, or, you know, the neighborhood store, understanding that that's, you know, of course, different than how Minneapolis does it. But overall, I think this is a really good product. I think, like I said, this combines some really strong aspects of these three different ordinances, and I am excited to move forward with it.
Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. And so, to that point that Councilmember Coulter just raised, I want to kind of key in on this 30 hour, this 30 hours worked for one hour. So, so it appears to me that, you know, if you kind of do that, you know, after you get the 90 days done, certainly you're going to have a little bit of a bank set up there, but, you know, realistically, how long is it going to take you to get to a point where you get to 80 hours? And so I wonder if there was any discussion at all in terms of just granting folks that 80 hours after that 90 days, you know, it's just, you just, each year, you just, you're just granted that 80 hours, and then above and beyond that, or a certain amount of 40 hours, and then you kind of work your way past that? So I'm curious if any of that discussion was had, you know, was there concerns from the businesses in terms of if you just give that 80 hours out there? I mean, traditionally, in the country, you know, sick time was just included as you got started, and then you would accrue your PTO above and beyond that. So I just wanted to understand how we get to, I know that there's 48 hours in the Duluth model, I think it was, and 30 in the Minneapolis model. Have we seen any models across the country where it's less than that, or just where it's just granted?
Mr. Anderson Lippert, was any of that conversation part of the task force discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, we, not significantly, no, we focused almost exclusively on these three models, but I appreciate the question. I think that's a good research question.
If you look at that, the thing that I'm concerned about is, as you go and do that research, you know, what does it look like from an employee standpoint in terms of being able to, to be able to utilize this policy? You know, how long does it take, you know, for you to accrue that time? Does it make sense in the first year to have a different policy where you get that, that 80 hours, and then the next year you accrue that over the time? I just, I want to understand how, you know, what's the, what's the mechanism or why we're trying to do this? Because it just sounds like there's a lot of work to get to that timeframe, and once you get to that timeframe, you know, if you have a sick occurrence that happens before that, you know, is that unpaid? How does that, you know, I'm just trying to understand, you know, how this impacts the employee? You know, obviously, you know, it's going to have an impact on the employer, but how does this work, and why this 30-hour period of time rather than just granting? So.
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond, Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, I think that what you've raised is an interesting idea. I think the, I was trying to do some math on, just on my back of a napkin here, about what that potential financial impact would be on the business owners, and I think I'm, I can hear them, and sort of the task force conversation overplaying in my head about making sure that this, you know, the businesses are going to have to provide this benefit to their, to the employee, employee. And so how do we make it administratively simple for them to deliver that's consistent across boundaries, that isn't, from their perspective, sort of a financial burden on sort of recreating something that maybe they don't have in place? And so it was trying to balance all of those perspectives, and so I think we can do, in terms of the analysis, is try to, you know, take some ballpark base of the population of employees, estimate how many might be in that small business category or large employer category, and then just take an estimated salary range, and then just try to figure out what that financial impact would be. I think we can come up with that number, but it might, it's going to take some creative accounting and some creative math, but I think that's probably the best way to think about the financial impact, and I think we can do that in partnership with business owners.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that. The other piece I have with that, so if we, if it's not paid, if it's, you know, the 80 hours are granted to that people, that it, as it being unpaid, does the employer feel differently about that? You know, in terms of, in terms of doing that? Does it then need to be 80 hours? Could it be 120 hours? Could it be 200? So what is that threshold in order to operate and run a business where that becomes untenable, and you can't, you know, and I know at some point you kick in FMLA rules kind of start kicking in, and that, you get to a certain point where, you know, it turns out documentation piece? So help me understand in terms of how that operates and works when we bring that back.
Councilmember Coulter, and then Mr. Anderson Lippert. Councilmember Coulter?
Just quick, and I don't know if Nat was going to mention this, but in terms of the numbers of, in terms of overall cost to employers to provide this benefit, there is Department of Labor, U.S. Department of Labor data that does stipulate that my, you know, I haven't looked at it recently, my recollection was that it came in somewhere around 1% to 2% of total costs for the business, something in that range. But there, I mean, there is, there is Department of Labor data that gets at that specific point as well, just wanted to add that in there.
Mr. Anderson Lippert?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Lohman's kind of line of inquiry there, I really appreciate, because I think what I'm hearing is a question, a broad question of what would, would employees, or there was a question about it, would employer, what would, would it make a difference to employers, the unpaid time? But I think I also heard a question, would it make a, would, would employees actually take advantage of this policy, right? And I think that's a question that came up in our task force, that's a really good question, and I would just urge maybe some qualitative data gathering, like talking to workers at the mall. You know, I've been a server at a restaurant full-time, you know, I did that for years, and I know there's a difference between having a policy on paper and taking advantage of it. And I think the, the language about retaliation obviously speaks to some of that, even if it seems, you know, somewhat technical, or maybe far-fetched, I think that, that's, my assumption is that the intent there is to communicate something to the employee about this actual benefit, and I think that's a, would be a really good in, in any future employee engagement around this, posing that specific question, would you take advantage of this policy where it offered to you, and if not, what would get in the way? I think would be really helpful to have that data as well. I just wanted to point out, in case this may have not been clear in the slides, and I apologize, that the, there was kind of a difference, if you picked up on St. Paul did distinguish actually between large and small employers, but they did it by phasing the policy and not by having it applied differently to the two groups, if that makes sense. So that's why they phased it in over the two years.
Any additional questions, counsel? I do want to say, thank you for the questions, and thank you for the hypotheticals that have been brought up, and all the different possibilities. I think it's led to an interesting discussion and an interesting way of thinking. I want to make sure that we remember, and caution us all a bit, I mean, we had this task force in place to think through a lot of these issues, and whether it's 90 days or 80 hours, or five employees, or six employees, and all that kind of stuff, and to remember that the task force was made up of both employees and employers. And those were the numbers that they ended up settling on, because, I mean, I'm guessing the numbers would have been different if it had been all employees or all employers. And so we need to keep in mind, when we make this plot, this policy, or consider this policy for the city of Bloomington, that we consider it for the city of Bloomington, both the employers and the employees who are under our jurisdiction, and that we are tasked with taking, you know, setting policy for, and making sure that this all works for everybody. So I just want to make sure that we keep that in mind. So, Mr. Sable, next steps on this?
Well, thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. I think the task force, I have promised them a celebration, because we didn't get to do it in person, so we do have to kind of convene one more time to properly thank the group for the, for the really thoughtful work. I think Peter Zuniga and I will sit down with the, with the staff and kind of go through the questions that have been raised. I think in terms of general head nodding, I think there's a general consensus that this is a good, a good ordinance to bring forward. I don't, I haven't seen anybody say to not do that, and so what we will do is refine sort of the document itself, and maybe some of the, add some of the additional, answer some of the additional questions that were there, and I think there's also a component of data gathering that is included in this piece. What we had proposed roughly as a timeline was to bring forward this ordinance and start the process, and shoot for roughly a mid to late March potential adoption. So there's the, the system of the city council and the approval process that we would have to adhere to, and so I think we have a short window of time in probably the next six weeks or so to, to really kind of refine the document, and then sort of start the official adoption process. And I think we'll really want to think through, not only how do we get more engagement from employees and employers, but like, as was noted, sort of how do we include some of the other commissions and task forces and advisory boards that exist that also would want to weigh in? And I will say that, I admit to the mayor, I appreciate that conversation about, you know, wrestling with all sides. I think how we've thought about it as a task force, is Minneapolis sort of started down this path, and St. Paul did a refinement, and Duluth did a refinement, and I think what we ultimately bring forward is sort of the next iteration and refinement of a policy that serves the Bloomington community, and so we will, we will bring this forward, we will bring this back to the city council, and shooting for sort of a late March adoption, assuming, of course, that the language works for the city council, but a recommendation will come forward.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions on that? If not, we don't have action on this tonight, this was informational. Mr. Anderson Lippert, thank you for your work on the task force, and thanks for your discussion here this evening, I appreciate it. Mr. Zuniga, thank you, and thank you, I can tell that we talked about this for about an hour, and I can tell because of the clock behind you. It's a, always appreciate that, that's always helpful. Thank you all. Thank you both, thanks, and pass the thanks on to the task force for us as well. Next on our agenda is a list of appointments to the different boards and commissions and task forces that the city council has representation on throughout the city of Bloomington. This is an annual process that we do, and it's a, as I said, it's, it's a way to ensure that the city is represented on boards and organizations, both within the city of Bloomington and city of Bloomington here, but also metro-wide in a lot of cases. And, uh, it, it's an important thing that we do and it's a, it gives us an opportunity to not only, um, represent Bloomington, but also I think in, in a lot of ways to, for each of us individually to kind of expand our knowledge and, and, and spread our wings and kind of learn more about a certain topic. And so it's always been, um, it, it's always been an interesting part of a role, my role as a city council member, I hope you agree as well, to serve on these and, and to figure out, um, the, the issues, the details, the specifics involved in each of the different groups that you're involved with and to bring it back and represent, represent the city of Bloomington with that group and to bring back that group to the city of Bloomington as well. And so this is a, this is a process that we're gonna have to go through and it's gonna be even more of a process this year as we do each of these appointments with a roll call vote. So it's gonna take us a little bit longer than what we've done in the past, I think, but we will get through it. Item eight point three, as we start our way through this, is the appointment to the Bloomington Convention and Visitors Bureau. And, uh, over the past year or so, it has been, I, I, I have served, Councilmember Beloga has served and City Manager Verbrugge has also served on the, um, Convention and Visitors Bureau. And, um, uh, I think the way we have done this in the past, we've allowed folks to step up or, or speak up if they would like to serve on the, on the group. If there's a, a, uh, more than one person, we have that discussion, we, we have that discussion among the, the council and among the people who are willing to serve. Uh, I know we, there's been discussion ahead of time, a little bit of chatter about who might be interested in different things here and there. But, um, for the Bloomington Convention and Visitors Bureau, is there anyone who is, uh, interested or willing to, to step forward to serve on the BCVB?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd be willing to do that.
Councilmember Nelson is willing to step forward? Any others? I myself obviously would be, I, I would like to continue on that and I can assure you that councilman, or that, uh, City Manager, Mr. Verbrugge would as well. If there is no further discussion, I'd look for a motion to appoint, uh, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Nelson and the City Manager, Jamie Verbrugge, to the Bloomington Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors with one-year terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
I'll be happy to make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dalisandro, second by Councilmember Carter, to, uh, approve that motion to the Bloomington Convention and Visitors Bureau as stated. Hearing no further council discussion, Mr. Brillard.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Dalisandro?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Item eight point four is the appointment to the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. Uh, last year, I believe, uh, Councilmember Nelson was our representative for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, uh, timeframe. This would be a two-year term ending December thirty-first in twenty twenty-three. And, uh, with your appointment to the BCVB, Councilmember Nelson, uh, is it my understanding that you're willing to step aside from the, uh, from the Chamber of Commerce appointment?
Yeah, I am willing to do that, Mayor, and, uh, you know, uh, I really did enjoy my time with the, uh, chamber there, so have a vast history with, uh, chambers and, but, um, uh, if someone else is interested in that, uh, I, I certainly would support that.
I would be thrilled to, Mr. Mayor. This is, uh, very exciting for me. If I get the opportunity to work with the chamber, that would be delightful.
Councilmember Dalisandro is interested? Any others interested? If not, I would look for a motion to appoint Councilmember Lana Dalisandro to the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce for a two-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Carter, a second by Councilmember Coulter, to appoint Councilmember Dalisandro to the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce Board. Hearing no further discussion, Mr. Brillard.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Dalisandro?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Item eight point five is the appointment to the I four ninety-four highway to airport to Highway one sixty-nine Project Policy Advisory Committee. And, uh, I think this was Councilmember Beloga, served on this committee last year, so there's a vacancy due to his departure, obviously. Um, the city staff that, uh, will be part of this would be, uh, uh, Public Works Director Carl Keel and Engineer Amy Maron. And we'll be looking for anyone interested in this appointment.
Uh, Mayor, especially considering the impacts on nickel and quill, I'd love to take that.
Councilmember Martin puts his hat in the ring for the four ninety-four Airport to one sixty-nine Project Policy Advisory Committee.
Say, Mayor, um, I'm interested, um, not necessarily, it doesn't necessarily have to be this particular one, but I'd be interested in taking on some more transportation, uh, type, uh, uh, stuff. Uh, so if one of these, uh, that it's available, uh, that I could take on, I'd like to do that.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Loman. But you're not specific, you're not specifically talking this, this appointment, but more of a, at least, at least one of the transportation appointments that we have?
Yeah, I, I'd be interested in that, yeah.
Copy. Anyone else interested specifically to the, uh, the Policy Advisory Committee for the Airport to one sixty-nine Project? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to appoint Councilmember Martin to the Policy Advisory Committee for the four ninety-four Airport to Highway one sixty-nine Project.
So moved.
We got a motion by Councilmember Nelson, a second by Councilmember Carter, to appoint Councilmember Martin to the, uh, the PAC for the Airport to one sixty-nine, four ninety-four Project. Hearing no further council discussion, Mr. Brillard.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Dalisandro?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Item eight point six is appointments to the Riverview Corridor Policy Advisory Committee and the Technical Advisory Committee. Uh, I have served on this, I think for half my life, if I'm counting correctly. It has been a long time appointment for the Riverview Corridor. I think it's been a seven-year appointment to this point. And for the, um, the, the, um, Technical Advisory Committee, I think Shade Rudlang and Julie Long were the city's representatives on the, uh, Strategic Advisory Committee, the Issues Resolution Team. Um, we have Jeremy Malquist on the Project Management Team, Issue Resolution Team and the Technical Advisory Committee for twenty twenty-two. So unless anyone wants to step in and take on an additional seven years of this one, I'd be happy to continue serving. Hearing no one coming forward, uh, I will look for, oh, well, I will look for a motion to appoint, uh, myself, Mayor Bussey, to the, uh, as the city's representative to the Riverview Corridor Policy Advisory Committee and staff as stated to the different technical and, um, uh, technical appointments to the Riverview Corridor Project.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion by second, uh, motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Dalisandro on item eight point six, the appointments to the Riverview Corridor PAC and TAC. Hearing no further comments, Mr. Brillard.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Dalisandro?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. And just to be clear, I only make those jokes because I worked on the Green Line for seven years as well, so it's, I've, I've, yes, just to be clear. Item eight point seven, an appointment to the US one sixty-nine Corridor Coalition. And I believe in the past, or the past year, this has been, uh, I gotta catch up.
It's me, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Coulter was representative with Councilmember Nelson as the alternate. And then Traffic Engineer Kurt Roberts is the staff representative with Carl Keel serving as the staff alternate there.
So Mayor, I, recognizing that I'm, I may be sort of poisoning the well by the way I'm framing this, I would prefer to come off of this. Um, and I, I would think, just given the nature of the geography, it would make sense for someone, either one of our large members or someone who represents the West Side to, uh, serve on this, this, uh, coalition. Um, I, I'm, I, I can continue if there are not any others who are interested in stepping up, but I, I would prefer to come off.
Thank you, Councilmember, or any councilmembers interested in stepping into this role? Councilmember Nelson is the, uh, alternate last year, you would have an opportunity, or Councilmember Loman, I think you had, you, you just mentioned your desire to be more involved in, uh, transportation-related issues.
Yeah, I'll defer if, uh, if there's somebody that's on that West Side wants to take that.
I, I would defer if, uh, Councilmember Dalisandro or Carter were interested, um, and just to preview, uh, if Councilmember Loman would like to do the thirty-five W one, I'd be willing to, to do that and, and maybe potentially be the alternate on that to him, uh, with one caveat, um, I am on a legislative committee on that, which has one more potential meeting coming up and, uh, but I think we could transition it after that, so I think thirty-five W would make more sense for Councilmember Loman.
It would, there's some, some things on thirty-five W I'd like to.
It might be an interchange or something, I don't know.
There's a couple of things on there.
And, and Mr. Mayor, uh, Lonnie, I, I, um, I think I'm the only representative that actually sits on all three of these, if I'm, if I'm doing the geography correct, so meaning it, meaning that my district has impacted one sixty-nine, thirty-five W and also four ninety-four. Um, so representing one of these would appeal to me, but I, I am open to suggesting that. I was originally thinking the four ninety-four one just because of the, uh, the length of it comparatively, but I'm very open to that if, as long as, um, as everybody else is. So I think we can make some, make some decisions as a group here that will work for everyone.
Councilmember Carter, any thoughts or?
Um, thank you, Mayor. You know, I do have interests, I would be the most interested probably in thirty-five, um, but I'd be happy to defer to others too, um, or serve as an alternate.
All right. How about if, uh, Councilmember Dalisandro, if you'd be willing to serve on the one sixty-nine and then as, perhaps as we get down to four ninety-four as well, perhaps? Um, or i- if we could do that and, and then, then, then two of the three, at least you'd have your?
Yep, I'm open to that, absolutely.
All right. Uh, is everyone good with that? All right, then I would look for a motion to, uh, to appoint Councilmember Dalisandro as the council representative to the one sixty-nine Corridor Coalition and with, uh, Kirk Roberts as the staff representative and Carl Keel as the staff alternate.
Do we need an alternate also, Mayor?
Oh, we do need an alternate, thank you. An, an alternate as well?
Yeah, and I'd be willing to serve as the alternate on that if, if no one else wants it.
Very good. And then, uh, as the motion I just mentioned with, uh, Councilmember Nelson as the alternate as well. Have a motion for that?
So moved.
So moved.
Got a, motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Nelson to make the appointments as stated to the US one sixty-nine Corridor Coalition. Hearing no further council discussion on this, Mr. Brillard.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Dalisandro?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Item eight point eight are the appointments to the I thirty-five W Solutions Alliance. And, um, in twenty twenty-one, it was Councilmember Nelson with Councilmember Coulter as the alternative and, uh, Public Works Director Carl Keel is the staff representative on this one. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Nelson, you said you'd be willing to, uh, to defer to Councilmember Loman if, if he was looking to move into a transportation role or a transportation advisor? Okay?
That's correct.
Councilmember Loman interested in thirty-five W Solutions Alliance?
I would be interested in that.
Councilmember Nelson, would you be willing to serve as, or Councilmember Dalisandro, would you be willing to serve as the alternate there?
No, I thought that, uh, that Councilmember Carter indicated her interest. Did I get that wrong?
I'm not used to having somebody on my right. Everybody's typically on my left, and so I apologize.
I apologize.
So Councilmember Carter, would you be willing to serve as an alternate or, or would you?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
And then Mayor, um, Councilmember Nelson is serving currently on the, um, you said a legislative, uh, piece on that? So is there a way to take this?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Loman. It's, it's a legislative task group. Uh, we've got potentially one more meeting and then a report, um, so I would just, if, if I could, just fulfill that part of it at least, um, to get that to the group, but I, I can, um.
Can we do this contingent upon that ending? Um, is that, is that possible?
I think that that would be an appropriate motion, yes.
Let me ask this, would it be possible for me to be the alternate and for Councilmember Carter to be the main person on the four ninety-four unless someone else was gonna do four ninety-four? Is that, that's the next one, isn't it? Four ninety-four commission?
That is the next one.
I'd, I'd be fine with that.
So if, um, the appointment then was Councilmember Loman to the thirty-five W Solutions Alliance with Councilmember Nelson as the, uh, alternate and then with Public Works Director Carl Keel as the sta, city staff representative on the thirty-five W Solutions Alliance, are we okay with that? Then I will make that motion to appoint Councilmember Nelson as the council representative and Councilmember, or excuse me, Councilmember Loman as the council representative, Council now, Councilmember Nelson as the council alternate, as well as Carl Keel as the staff representative. And I don't believe we've had a staff alternate in the past on this. Um, I think Carl's been doing this a number of years, uh, to the, uh, to the thirty-five W Solutions Alliance.
Second.
We have a motion, a second by Councilmember Dalisandro, is that who, I think that was who it was, to make the appointments to the thirty-five W Solutions Alliance as stated. No further discussion on this, Mr. Brillard.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Dalisandro?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Item eight point nine is the, uh, four ninety-four Corridor Commission Appointment. And in the past, past couple of years, it's been Councilmember Beloga, Councilmember Martin serving as the alternate with Planning Commissioner Glenn Markagard as the staff So, um, Councilmember Carter interested in this one? And if we put, uh, Councilmember Carter as the city representative, Councilmember Dalisandro, would it make sense for you to be the alternate there?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Let us do that then if we could, if everybody's happy with that. Everybody okay with that? Everybody comfortable with that one? All right. Uh, looking for a motion to appoint Councilmember Carter to, as the city's representative and Councilmember Dalisandro as the alternate and, uh, to, to Carl, or as, and Glenn Markagard as the staff representative. Uh, I'm gonna hold on one second here. So Glenn has been in the past, but, uh, we have Carl Keel written in here. I wonder if the, do we want to continue with Mr. Markagard here?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm gonna look to Mr. Brillhart who helped me, uh, put this, uh, packet together. Uh, Mr. Brillhart, do you remember?
Um, I wasn't advised of any change, so I, I would, I suggested this time leaving it as, uh, as Markagard.
All right, so, uh, Councilmember Carter as the representative, Councilmember Dalisandro as the alternate and Kirk, uh, excuse me, Glenn Markagard as the staff representative on the four ninety-four Corridor Commission. No further discussion, Mr. Brillard.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Dalisandro?
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
De LaSandro?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Item eight point ten is the appointment to the Bloomington Fire Department Relief Association. Um, Bloomington Fire Chief Yuli Seal, uh, Chief Financial Officer Lori Economy Scholler have been on this board as well as City Councilmember Dwayne Lohman as ex-official members in the, in the Fire Department Relief Association Board of Trustees. And, um, I'm assuming, I'm gonna assume the staff is gonna continue. Uh, Councilmember Lohman, your, your desire to continue on that board?
Yeah, I don't know. We, we've had conversations. I wanna make sure that, uh, that as many councilmembers as possible have the opportunity to, 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 um, uh, see what's going on with that. I know that Councilmember Nelson has expressed interest in the past too. Uh, so I wanna just be sure that we're able to allow folks to, I don't know how that works legally, uh, but, uh, um, and I know technically, Mayor, you're the, you're the, uh, backup to that 'cause I serve at your pleasure, but, uh, um, uh, I just put that to you, Mayor, um, as we discussed it.
I wonder if, uh, is, is there room for an alternate on this? Mr. Sable, any notion, any ideas on this? Is there room for an alternate on the, uh, Fire Relief Association Board?
Uh, Mayor, uh, councilmembers, I don't know the answer to that question offhand. If you can, uh, defer that for a moment, I can check in with the, uh, Fire Chief and, and check the bylaws to see what our options are.
Very good. Why don't we, uh, why don't we just set that aside for just a moment? I think that's the official term. If we set that aside for a moment and come back to eight point eleven and we'll go to eight point, or eight point ten and we'll go to eight point eleven, which is our suburban rate authority appointment. And with no changes looking there, and, uh, I would look for a motion to designate Utility Superintendent Scott Anderson as director and City Engineer Julie Long as alternate directors to the suburban rate authority for twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, a second by Councilmember Nelson to make the appointments to the suburban rate authority as it was presented. Hearing no further council discussion, Mr. Brillert.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
De LaSandro?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item eight point twelve, which is the appointment to the State Community Health Services Advisory Committee. And I believe in the, over the past year, uh, this has been, uh, we've been represented by, uh, Councilmember Coulter as long as our Public Health Administrator Nick Kelly. Councilmember Coulter, you've indicated a willingness to step aside?
Yes, I, uh, have some other preferences for where I'd like to serve and, and, uh, given that I'm, I'm willing to step aside here.
And I believe Councilmember Carter, you're interested in this?
Yes, yes, I am.
Very good. Anyone else interested in the state advisory, State Community Health Services Advisory Committee? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to appoint Councilmember Carter as the city's representative and Dr. Nick Kelly as the alternate to the State Community Health Services Advisory Committee to fill terms expiring on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Coulter, a second by Councilmember De LaSandro to make the appointments to the S C H S A C as stated. Hearing no further council discussion, Mr. Brillert.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
De LaSandro?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Sable, any, any update for us?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I, uh, yes, I do have, uh, uh, Article Five of the Board of Trustees, uh, composition says the Board of Trustees shall consist of nine members. Six trustees shall be elected from the membership of the Relief Association. Three shall be, three officials from the municipality. The three municipal trustees must be one elected municipal official and one elected appointed municipal official who are designated as representatives. Uh, the municipal trustees must be designated annually. So unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, you are not allowed an alternate in this case.
We are not allowed an alternate for, doubling back to eight point ten here, we're not allowed an alternate on the Bloomington Fire Department Relief Association. So Councilmember Lohman, if you're willing to continue to serve, uh, you'd, you'd be able to. We don't have an alternate, uh, at this time, or if you'd rather, uh, if you'd rather not continue to serve, we could, uh, make another appointment at this time. It's up to you.
Yeah, I think I'd better go ahead and, and continue to get to serve and we will look at trying to get that, uh, somehow changed in the, in the bylaws, um, kinda going forward for next year.
Very good. Doubling back to item eight point ten, I will make a motion, I will look for a motion to reappoint Bloomington's Fire Chief Yuli Seal, Chief Financial Officer Lori Economy Scholler and City Councilmember Dwayne Lohman as ex-official members of the Bloomington Fire Department Relief Association Board of Trustees for twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nelson, a second by Councilmember Lohman to make the appointments as stated. Hearing no further discussion, Mr. Brillert.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
De LaSandro?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Item eight point thirteen is, uh, an ex-official board membership on the Artistry Board of Directors. In the, uh, past year, I believe it was Councilmember Beloga and, uh, Council, and, uh, Mr. Verbrugge have served on this in the past. Um, like, uh, I think it makes sense to reappoint the city manager to this role and, uh, I know that we've had a couple of people express interest in the, uh, the artistry position. Uh, Councilmember Coulter, I believe, was one.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, given my background in the arts and, and as well as my previous service on the Board for the Purpitch Center, which, um, in many ways fulfills a, excuse me, a very similar mission to artistry, um, this would be, I think, something that I'd, I'd enjoy. I think would be a, uh, and I think I would have a valuable contribution toward.
I know others expressed interest as well. Uh, anybody else wanna consider this or, or talk about this?
Well, Mayor, um, I know that, uh, some, uh, board members reached out to me, uh, asking that if I, I'd be interested in, in this. I certainly have an interest in this, uh, but if there was a possibility where there could be, uh, and I know at this point, uh, it probably isn't in the bylaws, if there could be a backup, uh, for this, I'd be happy to serve in that role, um, uh, if there is anybody else interested.
Now, this one, I'd ask Mr. Sable to check on this as well, but I do know that I, I don't, don't believe there is a, a role as an alternate or a backup on this, uh, as this came about just a few years back when we, uh, previously did not have council representation on the, uh, on the artistry board. And so I, I don't know that would, that would be possible. Uh, I see Mr. Sable doing a.
Yeah, I'm pretty certain there isn't, but I, I wonder if we could, uh, you know, if Nathan gets appointed, he could, you know, work on that, uh, bringing that back or, or doing something like I, that I'm gonna do on the fire pension piece.
Councilmember Coulter would be agreeable to that, I think, if we could look to, to make that, uh, bit of change here with the, uh, the artistry board membership. Thank you, Councilmember Lohman. So if, if there's no further discussion, I'd look for a, a motion to appoint Councilmember Coulter as the city's representative and city manager Jamie Verbrugge as the alternate to the state, uh, uh, excuse me, to the Artistry Ex officio Board of Directors.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember De LaSandro to make the appointments to the Artistry Board as, as stated. Hearing no further discussion, Mr. Brillert.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
De LaSandro?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Item eight point fourteen is the appointment to the H R A Commission, our Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Uh, in the past, uh, again, Councilmember, Beloga served in that role. And with the opening now, uh, at least a couple of folks, I think, have said they were, had expressed an interest in this. Um, looking for folks who may be interested to speak up here on this one. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so first of all, I am, I am, of course, interested in serving on the H R A, having done so previously. And, and as some of you may recall, I had to, um, resign from the H R A due to scheduling conflict out of my own choice. Literally the last class in my, for my master's degree, uh, met Tuesday nights and I thought that I should probably not skip that. Um, so I, I would like to, um, serve on the H R A again, given, you know, my interest in, in redevelopment and, and affordable housing issues. The question I have though is, is, is this not a mayoral appointment? Is, I, I thought we had a recent discussion where we, um, we came to the conclusion that it was an appointment that the mayor makes and the council approves.
I see our city attorney shaking her head. Uh, Ms. Manderscheid?
Uh, yes, Mayor members, there is information on the request for council action. Uh, it's an excerpt from the H R A bylaws.
I see it now. With that being said, uh, I will make the appointment of, uh, Councilmember Coulter to the H R A Commission, uh, and look for the approval of the city council to this appointment. So I look for a motion to, for the, the approval of the appointment of Councilmember Coulter to the H R A.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Carter to, uh, endorse the mayor's appointment of Councilmember Coulter to the H R A. Councilmember Coulter?
Sorry, Mayor, just briefly, I know that there are a number of other folks on the council who are interested in serving on the H R A and, um, just would add that if, if folks have specific priorities, issues that you wanna bring up, I am always happy to, to talk through them.
Thank you, Councilmember. Hearing no further council discussion on this, Mr. Brillert.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
De LaSandro?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Item eight point fifteen is the appointment to the Sustainability Commission. One of our councilmembers, uh, Councilmember Lohman has served on the Sustainability Commission, I think, since two thousand seventeen. And, we will, uh, we'll be making a, an appointment and, and doing this on a yearly basis. I think this is the, the first official appointment or, I'm not sure exactly how we've done it in the past. I know we've done it a little bit differently. But, uh, Councilmember Lohman, uh, your interest in, in continuing on the Sustainability Commission?
Hasn't waned yet. Um, uh, I, another, this is another piece too, Mayor. I, I just think it makes sense. There, there's been occasions where, um, I haven't been able to make the meeting, uh, from not here or there for a reason. And, uh, I, I do know, um, that, uh, it would be helpful to have an, an alternate. I think we have to make, uh, changes to the, uh, bylaws in order to have that happen. Uh, there's a broader discussion that I'd like to have, um, about that. Um, uh, maybe now is not the appropriate time to do that. Um, I can bring that forward in another meeting. Um, I do know there's a number of, there's a couple of other folks who, who are interested. I know that, uh, we did reach out to, uh, to Jenna, uh, to kinda serve as, uh, the type of role that Jack served in the past. And I do know that, uh, Councilmember, uh, De LaSandro, um, uh, is, is also, uh, interested, uh, as well. Um, uh, so I'd like to find a way for these folks to be able to serve, um, and to be a part of the, uh, commission if they want.
So short of a, a, a bylaw change tonight, which obviously we're not going to have, it, uh, if, if you're seeking reappointment with the understanding that we'll bring this up or take this up and this and a few other appointments that we have made over the, the course of the evening here, uh, we'll bring this forward and, and continue that discussion about, uh, how to, I, I think it makes sense, how to, to ensure continuity, council continuity on this and make sure that we're, um, the folks that eventually when a, a change is made, that there is some background and some information. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so first, um, I ha- I have a question, but I, this is in no disrespect to Councilmember Lohman, and I absolutely appreciate his leadership on the Sustainability Commission. Um, but I was, since I was, um, some, a little bit interested, um, and I know others might be too, I just was, I was reading through the sustainability page. And it does say that, um, there's a maximum appointment of six years, but I don't know if that actually applies to councilmembers.
And honestly, I'm, call, um, Ms. Manderscheid?
Uh, yes, Mayor members, um, there, there is a provision in our city code. This, the Sustainability Commission is one of our, uh, code-created commissions, similar to Park and Rec, um, and, um, uh, planning, planning commission. Um, so for example, uh, our, our city code lays out some general provisions and then it goes into detail, um, in each of the various commissions. The Sustainability Commission has its memberships specifically described in, uh, city code and that's in the request for council action. And, uh, Councilmember Carter is correct in that our commissions do have term limits. That was a point of discussion that the council had, um, when it made those edits to the city code. However, there was a carve-out in, in that term limit provision that said that it did not apply to a councilmember serving on the commission. So we can certainly reexamine, uh, term limits and talk about alternates perhaps, but that would require a city code amendment. Um, and at this time, the city code does not contemplate alternates for the Sustainability Commission.
Thank you. And I am not proposing that we, I'm not proposing that we add term limits, but it just, it made me wonder when I read that on the Sustainability Commission's page. Um, and of course, I realized too that that, if that were the case, it would have broader impacts. Um, but, um, but with that question answered, I would also be interested in the alternate conversation. Um, except, um, I would, I would propose that, um, Councilmember De LaSandro be the alternate or, you know, if we can move in that direction eventually, that she be, um, based on her campaign priorities, I would expect that this would be a.
I would get in trouble if I didn't say I wanted it, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember, uh, Carter. Um, the, uh, Mayor, uh, if, if, I don't know if there was, uh, work in planning, um, around, um, s- some working groups associated with, for example, the Natural Resources Plan or other things like that, that we were also maybe considering carving out. Um, if that's an opportunity in lieu of, you know, of an appointment at the commission level, uh, I'd be definitely interested in doing that. So we can look at those ideas as well. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, thanks for your input, Councilmember Carter and, and Councilmember De LaSandro. And there, there's never a shortage of things for councilmembers to do, I've found. So I'm sure we can, we, we could find a way to, to get you involved and keep you busy. I, I can promise you that. And really good.
Mayor, I did have one other question for you. Uh, obviously with the, uh, retirement of, uh, the former council member, there is the Solid Waste, uh, Working Group, uh, that that, that is, um, of its, uh, uh, you know, it came out of, you know, this whole idea of, uh, sustainability as well. And so that needs to be, uh, appointed as well. So, um, um, I'm curious when that will be done as well.
Uh, Councilmember, I, I don't know that we have any work left in the Solid Waste Working Group, considering that the, the contract has been extended. Um, not sure when we'd convene that group again. I think that, that's a good question and I'd have to look into that and, and figure it out exactly when that group would be reconvened. As I said, I think the, the work for now has been completed, so, but I'm not sure.
I just think there may be a few things coming around, uh, organic waste and there's some other items that we're looking at, uh, at the Sustainability Commission, which I imagine that staff might wanna throw to that group. So, uh, that's just a thought.
As, as I said, there's never a shortage for councilmembers, for work for councilmembers to do. We can always find something. I guarantee it. Guaranteed.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Uh, Mr. Sable?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, if I may, I, um, I hesitate to do this, but when you talk about opportunities to serve, so the city manager's gonna be presenting, uh, in the future, an update on the Bloomington tomorrow together, uh, strategic planning process. And I'll just make note that one of the strategic priorities is environmental and human resources is within community building. And so there's gonna be an extra element, uh, focused on the environment, uh, as that, uh, plan and, and action team and measurement team rolls forward. There's again, uh, probably a third or fourth opportunity to engage. And so I think, um, the staff will work to make sure that there's alignment and connection between them, but there is gonna be additional opportunities that you'll hear about in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Sable. So if there's no further discussion, I'd look for an appointment or for a motion to appoint Councilmember Lohman to the Sustainability Commission for twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Nelson to appoint Councilmember Lohman to the Sustainability Commission for twenty-twenty-two. No further discussion. Mr. Brillert.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
De LaSandro?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye, but I didn't actually make the second.
Believe it was Councilmember Martin.
I'm sorry. My mistake.
No worries. I just want the record to be correct.
Thank you.
In my, I always bet here.
I put him against it. I voted for it, but.
And Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Item eight point sixteen are the acting mayor appointments. This is, uh, this is a perfunctory kind of thing where we actually break up the next two years into four-year cha- or four-month char- chunks. And, uh, each councilmember is asked to, uh, cover the role as acting mayor within their designated timeframe in the event that, um, the, I'm, I'm not able, I'm not here, or there's another reason that we need an acting mayor. So, uh, the way the schedule would work out, and I think it goes, uh, I'm not sure if it's by, by time served or exactly what it is, but how we've worked it out. January twenty-twenty-two to April twenty-twenty-two would be Councilmember Coulter. May twenty-two to August twenty-two, Councilmember Carter. September twenty-two to December twenty-two, Councilmember Lohman. January twenty-three to April twenty-three would be Councilmember Nelson. May twenty-third to August twenty-third would be Councilmember Martin. And September twenty-three to December twenty-three would be Councilmember De LaSandro. Look for a motion to make those appointments as acting mayor for the next two years. Look for a motion to make those appointments as acting mayor for the next two years.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember De La Sondro, second by, I think it was Councilmember Loman or Councilmember Carter, not, Councilmember Martin, you say it too quickly. I missed it. I'm sorry. To make the appointments as acting mayor as stated. Hearing no further discussion on this? Mr. Brillert?
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
De La Sondro?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. And our final appointment of the evening is for our council secretary. This is item eight point seventeen. I would look for a motion to appoint Mr. Matt Brillert as Secretary of the City Council for a term of one-one-twenty-two to twelve-thirty-one-twenty-two.
Mayor, I'd, I'd be happy to do that. Um, I'll go ahead and move that, but before I do that, I just want to say, uh, uh, really on behalf of the council and you, Mayor, uh, how much we appreciate your hard work over the year, uh, of, uh, of doing this. Uh, really appreciate your hard work, uh, with, uh, with the council.
Thank you.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Loman, a second by Councilmember Coulter to appoint Matt Brillert as Secretary of the Council from, for this calendar year, one-one-twenty-two to twelve-thirty-one-twenty-two. No further council discussion. Mr. Brillert?
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
De La Sondro?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Well, thank you all for that and thanks for the, um, the work and the thought that you put into that. And, uh, I, I'm sometimes sorry that we don't have, you know, even more. I'm sometimes sorry that we have so much that we have to, uh, to do in terms of our, our council responsibilities. But I appreciate everyone's, uh, willingness to step up and to take on the extra hours. It's, um, none, none of these are, are small commitments. They are all extra hours outside of your home, outside of your job, outside of the time with your family and, and outside of doing things that you would, uh, could otherwise be doing. So thank you for everybody, to everybody for stepping up and for being willing to serve. It's greatly appreciated. Above and beyond your, your, just your standard council responsibilities to do this is, is, it's, it's a big thing. So thank you for doing that. Thank you very much. Item eight point eighteen are the council, city council policy and issue updates. Mr. Sable, anything to report?
Uh, Mayor, council members, nothing to report from me.
Council, before we get into, uh, priorities and, and the discussion, just to, to talk about what we might want to accomplish over the next year, I'll, I'll ask, is there anything that anybody wants to bring up just in general under eight point eighteen, the, the council policy and issues updates? Councilmember Loman?
Thanks, Mayor. Just one question. I, I've been seeing, uh, uh, some stuff out, uh, out there, uh, uh, on the web, uh, regarding, uh, animal, our animal control, uh, process and how we, uh, conduct our animal control. And I just, um, wondered if, uh, staff was aware of that, uh, that, uh, folks are asking questions about how we staff that, how that compares with, with, uh, other, uh, other cities. And they're concerned about, uh, the plight of, uh, the animals that are there, uh, uh, in our, um, our animal control, uh, area. So I wonder if it's something that staff could look at and, and, and get back to us, uh, about if his other council members have heard about that. Maybe I'm just the only one who's, who's heard about it. I'm just curious.
Nope, I've heard about it as well. Uh, I think Chief Hartley is here and he's willing to, to offer a couple of comments. Chief Hartley?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, uh, we are aware of the post that was made on social media. Um, I will tell you that we have had, uh, staffing challenges, uh, with our animal shelter. Um, because our CSOs, uh, supplement our one full-time animal control officer, uh, in, in carrying out the duties of the shelter. Uh, currently we have, um, two dogs that are there and one cat. And so I did read that post as well and, um, uh, it obviously took some of the concerns to heart because I'm a dog owner as well, and I don't want to see any animal in a, uh, unfit condition. Uh, we are, uh, looking at several different options to increase the amount of time that we have, uh, people spending over there. Um, but the, the goal is to, uh, get the animals out every three, every three times a day. Sometimes that's not possible. And, um, when I tell you the current number, uh, one of those dogs, we know the owner, but they, uh, just are waffling on whether they want to come back and claim their animal. So, um, aware of, of, of the concerns. Um, I just do want to touch on, I know one of the comments was that, uh, the city isn't allowing people to volunteer over there. Um, there is a lot, we'd have to go through our risk manager, but there is a lot with unvaccinated dogs. We don't know the status. Allowing people, uh, residents to come in and spend time at the shelter with animals that, uh, we just can't predict the behavior and therefore some of the liabilities if there was a dog bite or if a dog got loose. So we are aware of it. Um, I too am a, a Facebook member of the Bloomington, uh, community group, and so I read those and, uh, I come back to work and I get right after staff and tell them, uh, we've got to do some things. Uh, just for the council, so they know, um, we have used about thirty-five thousand dollars in forfeiture funds out of our budget to upgrade the inside of the kennel and make it a little bit, uh, more user-friendly for the animal control folks. And, um, I believe in twenty twenty-three, there is money that's allocated for an upgrade as well, uh, that the council has already allocated. So that's the update. And like I said, I'd be more than happy to take questions.
Uh, Mayor, I did have one question, um, if I could. Um, so one thing I'm curious about, I know that, uh, with, uh, our public health, uh, we, uh, partner with Edina and Richfield. Um, I, I just wonder, uh, is there such a partnership that could be from a staffing standpoint, uh, that could be implemented that, uh, bolster, uh, this possibility or some other, uh, uh, city, uh, possibility that we could look to down the line to try to, uh, try to alleviate, alleviate this. I know short of hiring more staff, I mean, that's always the, you know, we could, we could do that, but there's going to be impacts to that. So I'm just curious if there is some type of shared agreement that could be done, um.
Uh, I'll answer it. Uh, we have considered that. We are partnering. We do take animals from Richfield and Eden Prairie currently. Uh, that is, uh, one of the things that we're considering. Uh, we are hiring for kind of a shameless plug here to the public, but we are hiring police cadets. And, uh, that process is still open and I would love to see a, a good vibrant list of candidates that, uh, would become uh, police cadets and part of their responsibilities are helping out at the shelter. But, um, we are, we are challenged with staff across the board at the BPD. And, um, it's no different with the community service officers who, who help supplement, uh, at the, at the animal shelter. But, uh, to answer your question, we are looking at the, the possibility of having, even if it's just a, a part-time or, um, to have some help from those other cities.
Councilmember De La Sondro?
Good to see you, Chief Hartley. Thanks for that. And yes, uh, I had the, this conversation on my list of things to, to bring up today as well. Um, I think, uh, Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Carter, we were all contacted. It sounds like the mayor was as well. Uh, hot topic animals in, in Bloomington. I love that we have so many people who love their cats and dogs. Um, I have a dog and two cats myself, so, um, I'm in t- team cat and dog territory myself. Um, so knowing, I mean, I know that there are, um, challenges associated with, um, animal control generally across the city where you have wild animals as well as domesticated animals. And actually I'm kind of surprised that there's such a small number of animals in our shelter in, in a given time, if that's pretty typical because of the size of our city and everything. Um, can, uh, can you talk a little bit about, um, aside from the challenges associated with, um, the, uh, staffing right now, are there, um, are there other areas of opportunity, um, that you would like us to be thinking about? Uh, specifically, I'm super excited about the idea if we think super broadly and big about, as we think about the, um, work we might want to do in the community wellness area. Uh, you know, uh, there's, that's right adjacent with public health and our community center and all that kind of stuff. Uh, is there an opportunity for, you know, reimagining what that might look like and then, and, and then actually intergenerational engagement with, uh, with the animals there and things like that. But in the meantime, operationally, how can we be more of help to you if there is, uh, anything that you would like us to consider?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember De La Sondro, uh, that's a good question. Um, I think that, uh, obviously the fact that we usually have a complement of six community service officers and we're down to two, and we're about to lose one to an internal promotion of police officer next Monday. Um, it's just a matter of getting people back hired up. And again, that's a process that, uh, takes many months to do. It's currently vacant or it's being posted. And, um, once we fill those vacancies, I don't think, you know, some of the concerns that were expressed in that Facebook post, I think will be remedied. Um, looking long-term, um, you know, the, the bottom line is that facility was never, uh, designed for long-term care of animals. It was, uh, to, to answer the question to your surprise that there's only two dogs over there currently, it's because a lot of people, when we do pick up their stray dog, they come in and get it. Um, we do work with, uh, rescues. There's ten different rescues. And so, um, they're coming in and they're looking at the long-term, um, guests, if you will, to make sure that they can rehome them in a, in a quick and, uh, you know, and as, as, as quickly as possible. So I think, you know, that's an old building. Uh, that's why the city recognized the need to go in and, and put in more adequate, um, you know, um, uh, uh, you know, secure area. I hate to call them cages, but they're, uh, kennels. And, uh, we are spending that money. But, uh, you know, if you really could do it right, and that is an older building, you could obviously maybe have a run outside where the dogs could go out and spend some time. Um, but again, the, the, the thought behind animal control and having that shelter, it's just a temporary. When your dog is picked up, it's running loose. It's, it's taken to the shelter and you're notified, um, and you come pick it up or you inquire and come pick it up. So we really aren't dealing with, uh, uh, this overabundance of, of stray or unwanted dogs. And when we do, we are working with the, with the rescues so that we can get those rehomed as quickly as possible.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I also had the animal control thing on my list and I appreciate Chief Hartley. We, uh, exchanged an email and he got me in touch with the sergeant there. So thank you for that help. Um, if it's all right, Mayor, I got it, with the chief, uh, here, I have a, a separate question, if I could shift gears a little bit.
Let's just make sure everybody, are, are we good with animal control for now, folks? All right, uh, go ahead, Councilmember Nelson.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And, uh, Chief Hartley, I know, uh, you and I have, uh, had this, uh, conversation before with regards to cameras, like the Ring doorbells and things. There was an article in the Star Tribune, uh, this weekend about, I think Edina's now got, uh, that, uh, safe program or something like that. If, if you could, um, just talk to how our police department uses that, if there's any differences between what's going on there and if that's something that you would, uh, recommend the council be looking at or something the department is looking at, similar to what Richfield and Edina did. Um, cause I know we're already using some of that technology and just want to make sure that information gets out because I got several questions about it.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, uh, I did read that article as well. Uh, we've been aware of these programs for, uh, they've been around for, for a year or so. Uh, some suburban cities have had them almost two years. Uh, we currently have an agreement with Ring, and so we are able to, uh, people that subscribe or, or utilize Ring are able to send videos directly in, uh, to the police department. Uh, we are looking at expanding that program to match what, uh, Edina and some of the other cities have gone to, where it's a GIS mapping system. Um, and therefore, um, you know, we would have instantaneously a, 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 a mapping of, of cameras that, uh, are available throughout the community. Uh, one of the only challenges with that is keeping that list updated. And if, uh, I sell my house, uh, not assuming that the neighbor or the people that buy it are going to maintain that camera system. And so, um, even with businesses, so someone would have to kind of keep that current. But I can just reassure the council that in the event of a major crime, um, we would be going out and canvassing a neighborhood anyway, uh, and not relying on a list that could be, uh, inadequately, um, you know, updated. So, uh, but I, I like that idea, um, especially when time is of the essence. I can tell you, going back to Friday's incident, it was the, uh, technology at the Mall of America that provided us with, uh, you know, some of the best early indicators of what had happened, who was involved, where they went. And so, um, anytime we can utilize video from the public, we are going to do so. So, um, we are looking at that and I would expect as a council, you'll hear something here shortly as we expand that program.
Thank you, Chief Hartley. Appreciate it.
Council, anything else for the chief while we've got him here?
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Council, anything else on council issues and update before we head into our next discussion here really quickly? I don't see any hands up. So typically what we do on our first meeting of the year, just take an opportunity to, uh, have a, a quick roundtable, uh, about priorities. Just, uh, not looking for a twenty-minute policy statements here, just kind of a, a quick statement of what folks think we need to, to look at and concentrate on over the next twelve months as a council and as a city. And, uh, just as, uh, an opportunity to start the conversation and to, just to talk about what's on our mind. And, uh, I'm happy to kick it off and, uh, I mean, my thought going into twenty twenty-two is that we have so many things on our plate right now that are so big. Uh, I think the primary thing that we need to do from a council standpoint and from a staff standpoint is to make sure that we continue to move the big things along. And if possible, kind of complete some things and, and just keep our eye on the ball, keep our eye on the, uh, the main things that we have to concentrate on. The nuts and bolts kind of things, uh, things like public safety, things like our, our park system master plan, to put that into motion, to, to talk about the sick and safely that we've been, that we spent a number of hour, a number of minutes talking about today. World Expo, the water park, all these big things that we have underway that I really think we need to concentrate on, to ask our staff to concentrate on, continue to get worked on, on those things. The only other thing that I would add, and I was, I was so glad to hear a couple of folks talk about it, uh, earlier, and it was kind of part of the, the Planning Commission's work plan also, was this, we, we need a, a comprehensive strategy to slow people down in the city of Bloomington. We really do. And I was glad to hear that, uh, it was brought up as part of the Strategic Transportation Plan, the Alternative Transportation Plan. Um, as I said, a way that we could look at, uh, enforcement certainly, but also education, engagement. Um, just trying to get people to buy into what we want to do, uh, to slow folks down in the city of Bloomington. So that would be my priority, those would be my priorities for the coming year, that we, that we continue to work on the big things that we've already got on our plate to, to those nuts and bolts things and then to look for a way to slow folks down on our roads. So others like to chime in? Thoughts that others might have? Councilmember Nelson, is that an old hand or a new hand?
Old hand.
Councilmember Loman?
I'll go ahead, Mayor. Um, uh, so for the next, uh, year or two, um, I, I'm, uh, I think, uh, crime and safety is, uh, something that, uh, you know, something we already do, but, uh, just making sure we're, we're focusing on that and making sure that, uh, uh, we're ready for that, uh, as we, as we work our way through, uh, this year. Um, and then a couple of years ago, we had the conversation, um, uh, at least when I was running, around the idea of, of, uh, living wage. Um, and, uh, uh, affordable wages and, and wage stuff. And so I'd like to have us have that conversation or begin that conversation, uh, um, around that. And then finally, uh, Mayor, to your point, um, you know, just focusing on, um, uh, the things that we do well here in the city, uh, the health of the city. Uh, you know, slowing traffic down and, and, uh, making sure we're getting back to residents and shoveling and those types of things, just, uh, just the general health of the, of the city and just making sure that we're, uh, and all the key indicators that we're, we're, uh, we're, we're continuing our excellence, uh, in each of those areas. So, um, uh, crime, safety, uh, affordable, uh, uh, livable wage, and then, uh, the health of the city.
Councilmember Martin and then Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Martin?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, baseball was brought up a minute ago and I, that's about where my head is at. I just, I'd love to spend this year racking up base hits. Um, so for example, in the Parks Master Plan, moving to this new kind of quadrant service area model, how can we find, uh, a pretty quick to get moving project, project in each of those service areas? So that we can demonstrate to folks not only look this thing is moving, but also look what this means and look how you can participate for larger projects. Maybe that's looking at a dog park on the east side or accessible playgrounds throughout the community. Um, and I'm sure that's already moving forward, but just making sure we've got one of those, um, in a lot of different areas we can point to. And, and along similar lines, uh, again, those neighborhood commercial nodes I keep coming back to, uh, that's something I'm hearing more and more frequently, folks. Everybody knows where these areas are in the city. They're really decent TLC. And I know we have the best of intentions for them, but especially as, as we have new community development resources, we're seeing awesome possibilities. community development resources, we're seeing awesome possibilities like community development center, and then potentially conversations around higher-density owner-occupied. How can we use those to kind of kick some of these opportunities in the tail, get them moving? And yeah, and just largely coming back to, we have a lot of amazing plans. Our outline for the Gateway Development District, Lyndale retrofit, Portland Legacy we've talked about. And how can we show folks that these are meaningful endeavors so that they continue listening to us as we're bringing them up? And I say that in the context of, I mean, three of us worked on the kind of core planning group for this broad strategic plan that we're going to be rolling forward with. And following the letter of what the core planning team came up with, it is wildly ambitious. And the step-by-step actions that are going to be put together to reach those goals are going to be massively intensive on staff resources, on this body of resource. So how can we start building those momentum with as many base hits and security to keep that moving forward and not have it get swamped by what's going to be a pretty large initiative coming up?
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I will start by saying that I share the sentiments of those who have spoken already, of each of you. And I am just, I've been incredibly thrilled and happy with the progress that we've made on so many different efforts over the past two years that I've been on council. And so agree that we really need to kind of, we need to buckle down and really just make sure that we are executing effectively on the policies that we've passed and the plans that we've put together. So continuing our support for small businesses and affordable housing, the Parks Master Plan, the community-based strategic planning, which is still underway, the racial equity work, sustainability and natural resources, making sure our fire department has the resources that it needs to really effectively deliver the services that we know that our residents expect and deserve. A couple of things I just wanted to point out specifically, some of them came up in the planning conversation earlier, like food trucks. I want to emphasize again the need to really make sure that we have safe and complete streets around those parks, both ones that are getting redone and those that aren't getting redone in the near, the next year or two. Agree on neighborhood nodes, really needing to have some focus there. And then two things specifically I want to bring up, Councilmember Loman has mentioned this too, really having a thorough conversation around prevailing wage and labor trafficking. I am a big fan of the policy that Richfield passed that included components around human trafficking and wage theft, which we know has been an issue in the metro area. And so to do whatever we can to prevent things like that from happening in our city, I think isn't coming upon us. And the last thing I wanted to bring up, which came up earlier this year, I believe, and I think a couple other council members received an email about that, about this, and it's around our charitable gambling policy. So in Bloomington, the revenue generated doesn't actually have to stay in Bloomington, it doesn't have to go to a local charity. In other communities, many of them have policies that the revenue generated from that charitable gambling needs to go to a local nonprofit. And so I would like to raise the question, and I would love to see us make some changes to our policy, that the money raised through pull tabs and bingo and things like that that are happening at restaurants are dedicated to Bloomington nonprofits, because we have many here and many that could really use those spots. And we know that some of those spots are being taken by other organizations that are not in Bloomington. And so that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I will just say before I get started, I was talking to my wife about this earlier, and she referred to this as our annual hopes and dreams time. So I've been looking forward to this discussion. And you know, and I think a lot of folks have said a lot of what I want to say. You know, I think we have asked, excuse me, a lot of our community, of each other, and of staff recently, and I do want to acknowledge that. I think we have sorted through some really, really important issues, and I think those things are going to define Bloomington's future for years to come. But I also think that we need to acknowledge that for a lot of folks, right now is really hard. It's a really, really stressful time in a lot of folks' lives. And there aren't a lot of positive examples of what a government should look like. And so I guess I would say that my message for this year is that, for whatever else folks may see in our U.S. or state capitals or in other cities in the area, that the government of the city of Bloomington can deliver, that we can do those sort of core, basic things that folks expect local governments to do. And to the extent that we take on new things, and I think we should, and I think we have kind of pushed the barriers of things cities traditionally do, whether it's our work around racial equity or labor standards or other things like that, that we do so without neglecting those things. And I think we have done a really, really good job of that so far, and I want to make sure that we're continuing to do that. As far as what's on my list in terms of priorities, I don't think anyone will be surprised to hear that the first thing is our Earn Sick and Safe leave ordinance. Obviously, we just spent, excuse me, a fair amount of time talking about that, so I'm not going to go too far into it. But, you know, it just, it feels like every day we see in the news more and more evidence of how needed this is, whether it's the Omicron variant surge and Bloomington parents sending their kids back to school today, or even the increasing number of violent crimes that are tied to domestic abuse. The need is just so clear for this, excuse me. Excuse me, my apologies. I would also like to see us, as others have mentioned, move forward on a prevailing wage ordinance, and as Councilmember Carter had mentioned, some work on wage theft. I, you know, more and more, I think we're seeing that we're never going to win an economic race to the bottom. And given all of the redevelopment we have on our horizon, I think we just need to be very clear that we measure our economic strength, not only in terms of our tax base or the number of businesses or whatever else, but how we support workers as well. And so I want that to be a very critical piece of the conversation moving forward. Beyond those things, you know, my priorities frankly just come from what I heard from a lot of folks at the door, our park doors. Our Park System Master Plan, in particular, I think the critical piece that we're going to have to tackle is funding. I think this is a real opportunity to have a very direct conversation with our neighbors about how we provide resources to things that we say we really, really value, understanding that there are a number of ways that we can do that, and there may be some not insignificant asks that we make of the community, and how are we engaging in that conversation? And I also do, as others have mentioned, want to revive our conversations and efforts around our neighborhood commercial centers. You know, this is, it's of course a critical piece of economic vibrancy and vitality, but it's also a quality of life issue for a lot of folks. I've mentioned this, I think, to a lot of folks before, but, I mean, you think of how many people come into our city off of Highway 77. And the first image they get is Old Cedar and Old Shakopee. I mean, we can do better than that. It just, it makes me just shake my head. And you know, the same Councilmember DeLisandro and I talked about 90th and Penn, and folks going to football games at the stadium there. I mean, you could take your pick on any number of other places. And I think there are some issues there around site control and so on that I think we can and should work on, and I hope we can continue to be proactive on that. And then the final thing that I really just want to mention, it's really not so much focused, I would say, on policies or ordinances, but I think governing in its sort of broadest sense. You know, I heard someone once say that government is defined as just the things that we choose to do together. And I think "together" is a really critical word there. And I have noticed a trend that frankly was much more common elsewhere, but has become unfortunately more evident here in Bloomington as well. And that is an unwillingness to engage in productive conversations. Now, I'm not naive enough to think that we can all come together and solve all the world's problems over a cup of coffee, but I've always believed in working in good faith with anyone who will do the same. And that means we have to be willing to have difficult conversations and at least try and work toward finding solutions. It's really, really easy and convenient frankly for everyone to just go to their own corners and snipe at each other, but frankly, it makes for a lousy public life, and it's a terrible example for the community. I will not speak for others on this council, but I am willing to put myself out there and continue to do that work, and I hope others in this community will join me. But that belief also comes with a challenge. And that is that we have to all be ready to really engage, to move beyond tired talking points that don't line up with reality, to not assume that any one person is always terrible or always pure as the driven snow, to face up to realities that don't go away just because they're uncomfortable or hard to understand. And I get that the political incentives these days increasingly are away from that kind of thinking. And I'm not going to pretend that I am completely blameless in this conversation either, but that's not an excuse to try and do better. And I would say to folks, to the extent that folks are still watching at 10 o'clock on a Monday night, if you believe that you agree with what I just had to say, then step up and show it, and let's get to work.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you. I'm, it is such a privilege to be up here with all of you. Before I get into my hopes and dreams, as Councilmember Coulter put it, I just want to say I'm, one of the things I've been most impressed by in my couple of months here that I've been getting up to speed is just the incredibly professional and just the grade A staff that we have here in Bloomington. It is a remarkable group of people trying to do the right things for our city. And it makes it easier as a council member, I think, to believe that when we ask tough questions or we want to get more information or things like that, that we're going to get information, not only that is really well-thought-out and thorough, but also made in very good faith. I don't think people working from agendas and things like that in our city. And for, you know, for people who, we're a strong city manager, weak city council system, that's how our charter is made. And so the work that we do on council is largely is a, for lack of a better way to put it, besides the hope and dream thing, checks and balances thing, right? And so making sure that we feel comfortable that the staff is acting in the best interest of our citizens is a big part of what we do, and I've just been so impressed. So I just wanted to first say that, thank you to every one of you, from police chief in the department at the police, Carla, and the community development folks, I mean, every single one of you that I've interacted with, Christina and that group around the voting. I've just been so happy, so thank you for that. If I don't say it again for another year, give me a break, please, thank you. Because I'm usually thinking about what to do, not what to sit back and appreciate. A couple of quick things, nobody mentioned climate change, so as you can imagine, I'm gonna. Climate change is, we know that buildings and transportation are the two biggest things we have to do. What's really great about this opportunity is that it dovetails nicely with so many of the other things that people have already said, right? Slowing people down, there's a couple of ways to do that, speed bumps and stuff like that, of course, but you can also take roads away and make them about bikes and mass transit and walking and other things like that that drive climate change mitigation, right? And so I'm not saying we should take all our roads away, but I'm saying let's think about things as a, in a broader context in that regard, so that, so that we, you know, we have a city that was built around the automobile, as so many cities in America are. When we rethink that and talk about how to get people around the city in different ways, we don't necessarily mean to solve the problem of slowing people down, but we, it has that lasting effect anyway, and that's a good thing for us. So thinking about things like that, and of course, making sure anytime we build something new, and which we're going to do a lot of, that we've got climate mitigation strategies in place from the get-go, right? And then the only other thing that really didn't get mentioned today that I'd like to throw out there is, I'm specifically excited about the collaboration we can have with our school boards to improve the wraparound services we offer to our students and our families. I think there's a unique opportunity for us to reinvigorate the good work that the city and the school board can do together, and so I'm super excited about that. I'm not quite sure what that leans to, and I'm not quite sure how, I mean, maybe every single person in the city gets involved in that, but I'm looking forward to seeing how that might progress, so thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Sure, Mayor, I got just a couple of quick things here. First, top of my list, public safety, I think that's been mentioned. I think there's a lot of concerns within the community. We see high-profile crimes within the community and in adjacent communities, and want to first thank you and Chief Hartley and the city manager for working with the neighboring communities to help resolve that. I would love to see a little bit of an update on some of what you guys have been talking about, some of what you're seeing might help. Some of it is just intractable, it's a regional issue. If the fire department is something that I think we've had ongoing conversations about in terms of how we transform that based on current realities, and I think something we need to keep getting our arms around in the next year. One of my big hopes is that we bring back the town hall meetings, whether they be virtual or in person, but I'd really like to see that happen this year. I think that was a great way for us to engage and hear from the community in a very productive way. And we continue to get better with those, and so I would love to see those happen again. For me, part of it is, you know, stepping aside from what we do and what our ideas are and listening to the community and that strategic planning process and seeing what comes out of that. I'm excited about that coming forward, so it's not just about us, but it's really about the residents and businesses here. And the last thing that I'd mention is just financial fiscal responsibility. You know, we've got a lot of big asks, we've got a lot of things on the plate, we've got a lot of improvements, we've got a lot of aging infrastructure, we've got a lot of things that are going to cost money, and really, really trying to figure out a way we can do that in a way that is sustainable financially for our community is a really important thing for us to do. And so those are kind of my top priorities for this year. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to you all for your input and your thoughts. And I know that staff is paying attention. I know that Mike was typing feverishly over there and others were watching. So again, can't guarantee that every, that all of the hopes and dreams will be realized over the next 12 months, but I think there's nothing wrong with throwing those stretch goals out there and seeing what we can accomplish over the next 12 months as a community. So thank you much for your input. Mr. Sable?
Mayor, councilmembers, I just want to, on behalf of the city manager and the staff, say thank you for the work that you do for us. And we feel supported, we know that we're supported. We are eager to do fun, big things and do good work. And so for us, it's a wonderful opportunity to serve, and we, every time that we get clarity from the city council, we get better. And so that would be, I know the city manager has probably said that at this very spot at this time many times, and so, you know, we look forward to doing the work and look forward to 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all, to all the staff. We're, it's second to none. I say that all the time, and I firmly believe it, it's second to none in the state of Minnesota, so thank you. Counsel, is there anything else for the good of the order this evening? Hearing nothing, I will look for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn this evening's meeting. Hearing no further council discussion, Mr. Brillett?
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
DeLisandro?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Barton?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0, we are adjourned. Thank you very much for tuning in, thanks for everybody who participated this evening, thanks for watching, thank you councilmembers, staff. Have a great rest of your week, and we will see you next week, thank you much.
Thank you.